The next item on the, on the agenda is the update on reopening of schools. This is a proposed plan for the coming back to school on August 17th. At our work session on July the 6th, we had lengthy discussion around the challenges and opportunities of bringing our students and staff back in our buildings. We know that everyone's goal is to get back in school in person as soon as we can and as soon as we can do that safely. This item on our agenda is an action item and I will, at this time, I will hand it over to Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today, we bring to you our recent work related to the reopening of Gaston County Schools. On July 14th, Governor Cooper announced that school districts could consider Option B or Option C under the guidance provided in June. You will see that Plan B allows for the return of students while eliminate, limits the overall occupancy of our buildings by dictating that each student must be able to have six feet of social distance. We will provide you information today related to human resources, which deals with our employees, which is a significant part of any reopening of our schools, is our faculty and our administrators who are responsible for the education of our children. You'll see operational plans for transportation, school nutrition, and the overall operation of our school buildings. You'll also be provided an in-depth look at how the education program will be this fall. What we know is that the solution everyone would like is to be back where we were in February, prior to the effects of COVID-19 virus impacting the state of North Carolina. Unfortunately, today, that is not an option. There's not any option that will allow us to occupy our schools every day of the week with all of our students. We have studied options that have considered partial occupancy of our buildings, meaning only having certain grades come every day. We looked at options of a group coming for one week and having a group off for a week or groups off for two weeks. We have tried to find a way to establish school as close to normal as possible. We have explored Option C. We know that we have a virtual academy and we have seen a growth in this option by our community now with folks exercising that choice. But with all the guidelines set forth, we have not found one that allows us to meet the needs of every student that, based on the different emails we have received and comments. So I want to tell you upfront, there are many questions still to be answered. But what we need is to get guidance on how we're going to move forward so that we can further develop these plans and begin to answer some of those questions based on the implementation of Plan B. We know our community needs to know the intent and we will try to present that today with as much of the information as we have available at this time. Going back, when we met on July 6th, we talked about being in uncharted territory. We talked about we wanted to be with our stakeholders and we have met with a number of stakeholders and their input is reflected in what we say today. But through it all, we still know that 2021 will be different. We want all students and employees to be in a safe learning environment and we strive to inspire success in a lifetime of learning. We talked about two documents when we were together on July 6th, but on July 14th, they amended the Strong Schools Public Healthcare Toolkit and it gave us further additional things to think about. But through all that, our goals have not changed. Where we want a safe environment and we want a plan that is in the best interest of all of our community, where we can provide in-person and remote teaching and learning in our community. So today, you will see the work of the reentry efforts. You'll see the stakeholder input and then you'll see our instructional expectations for 2021, based on where we are today. We still have the three basic plans, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, as delineated in the Governor's First Directive. But he did on the 14th amend Plan B. We are required to have face coverings for all teachers and all students K-12. There have been earlier guidance that 11 and under did not have to wear face masks, but it is a directive that all students in attendance must wear a face mask K-12. We are told to limit the number of students, staff, and visitors within a school to the extent necessary to make sure six feet distance can be maintained. We are instructed that we must have temperature check screenings before anyone is entering the building. We are to establish a process and dedicated space for people who become ill to isolate and have transportation plans for those students. We must provide a plan for clean and disinfecting high-touch surfaces regularly in our schools and vehicles. We must require and provide frequent hand washing throughout the school day, along with hand sanitizers at entrances and in every classroom. We are instructed to discontinue activities that bring together large groups. We must limit nonessential visitors and activities involving external groups. It is further highlighted to talk about field trips and the lack of being able to do those. We are to discontinue the use of any self-service food or beverage distribution. It is also further recommended that we are to designate hallways and entrance and exit doors as one-way. We are to keep students and teachers in small groups that stay together as much as possible. In providing school nutrition, we are to consider to deliver meals to the classroom and have them eat in their classrooms unless the cafeteria has the possibility to, to meet the six-foot social distancing. We also should explore physical barriers such as Plexiglas at reception desks and other areas of interaction. So all of that was added as we were given Plan B to consider. Of course, remote learning with Plan C was still in place. We talked about these focus areas on July 6th and we have continued to work and we developed various school work groups and I just highlighted six here for you. Academic Services, Auxiliary Services, Finance, Human Resources, Technology and Communications. And you're going to hear primarily from four of these today. Academic Services, Auxiliary Services, Human Resources, and Technology. But through all these plans, it continued to be safe buildings, safe classrooms, and safe activities. When we met on July 6th, we provided this chart that showed there were a little over 1,000 cases on June 30th in Gaston County. Last week, the number released for July 13th was over 1,800 cases. This causes pause into any planning that we would do and we stay in contact with our local health department as well as listening to the state health department about the numbers and how it impacts our operation. So to begin our presentation today, I want to ask Mr. Clinton, who is your Executive Director of Human Resources. He has been at the forefront since July, June 15th, when we were first allowed to bring some employees back. And he has had to work through bringing those employees back to support our schools for the closing of the school buildings and then for the cleaning and setup of our school buildings as we look forward to the 2021 school year. So he will walk you through what we've been doing with hiring and the various processes and that. So I would like to ask Mr. Clinton if he would take the mic.
Good afternoon, Dr. Booker. Good afternoon, Chairman Moore, Vice Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker, and Board Members. I would like to share with you some updates from Human Resources as we work toward the start of a new school year. Many of you know that, that we have faced multiple challenges since March 13th. And in Human Resources, it's been no different. We've had, had lots of, of challenges that we've had to overcome in order to prepare ourselves for the opening of school. This summer, I would like to start with just to talk, take you through our new hire orientation and how we've had to adapt to a virtual setting as opposed to the traditional face-to-face setting. So with that being said, we have developed a virtual platform in light of COVID-19 for onboarding for our new employees. The process involves multiple people in Human Resources. As we discuss information regarding insurance, pay, benefits, licensure, teacher support, the school calendar, social media, and school email accounts. The process that we've developed takes approximately two hours for an employee to, to go through these process, through this process. And we have orientation set up on every Tuesday and Thursday at multiple times throughout those days to accommodate our new, new employee schedule. We have found that this virtual onboarding has been very beneficial to our, our new hires. And we've received lots of comments of, of just how, how, how fortunate the, the new hires felt to, to have this as an option as opposed to, to come into a specific location and especially in light of the, the current situations. So that is, that is one of the, the first things that we've had to adjust and adapt to here in Human Resources. The second thing that I want you just to be aware of is the TIPS program that we have in Gaston County. Our TIPS program is, is renowned statewide. People all across the, the state talk about Gaston County Schools Teacher Induction Program. And we're, we're continuing to work with, with academic services, Human Resources and academic services are combining their efforts to make sure that this year is no different and that our employees receive exactly what they need in order to be successful during that first year of, of teaching in Gaston County. And as you all know, that's very important in, in our retention of teachers. So we want to make sure that we're providing the act, the support that's needed for employees as we, we move through this first year. This year, the TIPS program will conduct their opening meetings on August 4th, 5th, and 6th. So please mark your calendars for these meetings. Of course, these meetings this year are going to look a little different than they have in the past because these will be, these, these meetings will be done through a virtual platform. So as we've gotten used to, to the virtual Zoom meetings and the, the Google Meet meetings, this will be very similar to that where we, we're providing the information that's required to our new hire employees through, through this virtual onboarding and TIPS program. Next on the agenda is the Safe Schools System that we currently have in place. And this system has, has been very beneficial for our, our staff during this, this COVID-19 time because we've been able to provide professional development through a platform to all employees. And all employees have access to this program. So that includes our, our teaching staff, our teacher assistants, our cafeteria staff, our custodians, our bus drivers, bus monitors, administration. Everyone has access to the Safe Schools System for Professional Development. In this, in this system, you'll find that there's lots of professional development on very relevant topics that we're all dealing with. Currently, we've asked that all of our employees complete two professional development activities that are due on August the 10th, when teachers arrive to, to schools. And, and the two activities that we've asked all employees to, to complete are in regards to the coronavirus updates and also in regards to human trafficking. And as many of you will recall, the human trafficking this year is part of a two-hour program that we have to, that all stu-, all teachers that work directly with students have to participate in. And this human trafficking professional development that we're offering right now to our employees is one of the two hours that will be required this school year. So we're, we're very fortunate to have this, this program, the system in place for our employees. And currently, of the 3,800 some odd employees, 2,100 of those, of our employees have completed the coronavirus professional development and 1,800 of them have completed the human trafficking portion of our professional development. And like I said, we have, we're able to, to utilize due dates. We're able to, to monitor exactly who's completed the, the professional development. So it's been, it's proven to be very beneficial. Next up is the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. Folks, and this is where we spent lots of time in, in, in Human Resources over the last few months. We've, we participated in, in discussions with human resource departments all across the state on understanding exactly the leave options that are available to our employees, what's in the best interest of, of our employees, and making sure that our employees are taken care of during this time. We know that many of our employees have lots of questions. Many of our employees have, have, are anxious about what's going to happen. And so we just want to provide a, a calm presence to our employees as we move forward into this uncharted territory. Under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, there are two available leave options. The first available leave option is the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. This provision provides full-time employees up to 80 hours of paid time off at a certain percentage based on, on the covered reason associated to COVID-19. It also provides our part-time employees a certain percentage of pay as well, up to 80 hours of, of time off as well. Under the reasons covered under the, the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act are the employee, employee is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine related to COVID-19. The second reason is the employee is advised by a doctor to quarantine due to COVID-19. The third reason is the employee is exhibiting symptoms related to COVID-19. The fourth reason under this act is the employee is the caregiver to someone that has been ordered to self-quarantine due to COVID-19. And the fifth reason under this Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, dealing with the emergency paid leave, is the employee is caring for a child whose school or place of care is closed due to reasons related to COVID-19. And as you can see there, there, there's multiple examples, multiple reasons for, for the coverage. And we've worked tirelessly with our employees to make sure that they understand that these are provisions that are available. We've had to utilize these provisions to certain employees already that have, have had a situation that involves one of these five areas. I think it's important to note that, that the employee is granted 100% of their pays, paid for reasons that involve them directly and with them quarantining, quarantining directly. So if they have been diagnosed, if they're exhibiting symptoms, or if they've had a direct exposure to the COVID-19 virus, then they are, are given this 80 hours of, of free protection for the emergency paid leave to, to make sure that they stay in a 100% pay status during this time. If the employee is the caregiver for someone who's, who, who they're looking after or someone they're taking care of, oftentimes, we have many of our employees that, that are caregivers for their parents. Then the, this Emergency Paid Leave Act is available to them as well, but is it available at two-thirds of their pay? And then also, the, the, the other reason there is the, for childcare, if they're caring for a child. Again, it's offered at two-thirds of their pay and again, it's up to 80 hours. The one difference there is if you have a child and your school or your, your daycare or wherever you're, you're utilizing as a childcare facility is no longer in service due to the, that's due directly to the COVID-19 virus, then you also have, you can apply for the Second Act of the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, which is an expansion of FMLA. And it's just, just for anyone that has a childcare issue. And of course, under an FMLA leave, a person can qualify for 12 weeks of, of leave. And of course, the pay during that time is taken from that individual's accrued leave, either their sick or their annual leave time that they built up in that, in those areas. Also, it's important to note that, that our employees are also, they can also apply for just a, a typical family medical leave. And we have had some employees in Gaston County reach out to us to, to discuss all of these options thus far. So just wanted you to, to know kind of where this Family First Coronavirus Relief Act is and what we've been doing with our employees here in Gaston County. I will get with, I will talk to you more about the accommodations at the, later in the presentation. If you will notice here, we have an employee COVID-19 flowchart that we've developed for employees that test positive for, for the virus. We have one that we've developed for employees that exhibit symptoms. And we have one that we've developed for employees that, that have had a direct exposure. Ms. Davis, if you'll go back one slide and we'll stay here on this one just for a moment. In each of these examples, you can see there are multiple scenarios that can occur depending on the information that Human Resources receives from an employee or the employee supervisor. And I just wanted to show you and have you aware of, of just exactly how complex, and I'm sure all of you are aware, how complex a situation can become because there's so many unknowns to this virus. And we've had employees that, that have been asymptomatic here in this county. We've had employees that had just regular tests that are positive and showing symptoms. We've had lots of folks that have, have had symptoms and we've had to give guidance there. On occasion, those asymptomatics have turned up that the employee does indeed have the virus. And then on other occasions, it has been something totally different. And then, of course, the exposures. And folks, the exposures are, are the one that's really tough to deal with because oftentimes, it's a, a second or third-hand exposure that may have occurred. For example, a spouse may have come in contact with somebody at their workplace that has the virus. And, and once they find out that they've been in contact, they, they let their spouse know and then we're dealing with a situation that's a, a second or third-hand con-, exposure or contact. And so sometimes these can become very, very difficult to, to work through and, and oftentimes, we have to seek guidance from, from not only our health professionals here in Gaston County with Gaston County Schools, and that's Susan Daly and her team, but also we, we reach out on occasion to Gaston County's Health and Human Services Department and the Gaston County Health Department for, for guidance as well. So, so I just wanted to, to take a minute just to show you these, these different flowcharts that we've developed. Now, obviously, we've developed these flowcharts because we want to make sure that we're giving consistent information to, to employees. We want our employees to, to feel, without a doubt, we want them to feel like we've wrapped our arms around them and given them lots of support, but we also want to give everybody the, the, as close to the same advice and, and requirements as possible. Now, knowing that, I say that as close to because, you know, certain situations dictate certain, certain activities that have to occur. For example, we always tell the employees, regardless of which, regardless which one of these situations they come in, they, they're dealing with, either an exposure, symptoms, or a, a diagnosis, the first thing is to, to immediately self-quarantine. And you know, that's just, just good common sense. We want to contain the, the virus there. And then, of course, if they have not been tested, we encourage them to get a test. And then they're, they're at home, depending on outcomes related to the test, or they're at home until they have a, a diagnosis from the North Car-, Gaston County Health and Human Services Department clearing them to return to work. So there's, there's lots of, of scenarios that can occur and of course, we're dealing with these individually, with the employees, oftentimes with the supervisors, to make sure that they have that guidance. If, as you will see here, we have guidance for both employees and supervisors that are, that are posted on our Gaston County Schools website, under the Human Resources page. And we want to make sure that our employees know that they're, what it is their next steps may, may be if they don't feel comfortable reaching out. And we have noticed that, that many of the folks that, that have dealt with this, this virus have, have wanted to remain private. And obviously, we want to, to make sure that, that our folks know that, that their privacy is important to us, but also to know that, that if we have to disclose any information, we want to do that as well, depending on if, if they're currently unfortunate for us, lots of our teachers, of course, all of our teachers are, are at home right now. But, but we've got to make sure that anybody that's in our buildings, that we're doing the contact tracing with other employees to make sure that they're safe as well. And at the end of the day, folks, that's the, the bottom line that we've really tried to work on here in Human Resources, is to make sure that people, first of all, feel supported and secondly, are, are safe and that we're, we're maintaining the safety and dignity of those that they work with as well. Accommodations for high-risk employees. There are accommodations that we can provide. I'm just going to start here. We've got three questions that we, we think are very relevant to the accommodations. The first one is who qualifies as high-risk? And employees who, who self-identify as high-risk for severe illness from COVID-19, per the Centers for Disease Control and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Service Guidelines, may request a workplace accommodation. And these individuals include into anybody that's age 65 or older, a person that has underlying medical conditions such as chronic lung disease, asthma, a heart condition, a compromised immune system, obesity greater than 30% of a body mass index, diabetes, kidney disease, or, or a liver disease. Then the question becomes, well, how do I request an accommodation? And the employees that, that self-identify can submit a, a COVID-19 accommodation request form to Human Resources for review. The Human Resources Department will work with our ADA coordinator, which we're fortunate here in Gaston County to have somebody that, that works with, with accommodations on a regular basis, to, to review each request. This form, along with information regarding the temporary accommodation information, is located on the Gaston County Schools website under the Human Resource page. So on our website, under the Human Resources page, we have this accommodation form that, that is available for individuals to look at and to review to see if they may qualify for an accommodation. And then also on the website, on that same page, is the actual form for them to submit if they would like to, to submit for accommodations. And so what types of accommodations are available? And that's been one really hot question that we've dealt with here in Human Resources. And so an employee's request is typically directly related to their job function and the expectation to fill that role. So certain accommodations may not apply for all job positions and that's important to keep in mind. Some examples of accommodations are rearranging the workplace or workspace to allow greater social distancing and we've all been, been informed of how important social distancing is. So that's one accommodation. Another accommodation may be the use of physical barriers. Another accommodation may be modified job responsibilities. Another accommodation could be cleaning the workspace, especially the high-touch areas on a more frequent basis. Another accommodation could be personal protective equipment or enhanced prefer, personal protective equipment, like extra things for the individual. And then, of course, the alternative, alternative, alternative work site or location. And we've had lots of people inquire about this as a, a, a particular accommodation because we've had, you know, multiple people reach out about remote learning going forward. And so this is one. But knowing that, that we have to, to, to really look at, at the plan that we're in and where we will be moving forward and if this is actually an, an option for, for someone that's in moving forward, and if this is actually an option for someone that's in front of students. This concludes my portion of the presentation. Do I have any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Clinton, you have given us, I think, a thorough report as far as what you have done with personnel, but I wanted to ask you about the last part of your presentation. You mentioned rearranging workspace. If we are to space our students six, make sure that six feet are already in place, and we need to accommodate in addition to that, are we talking about additional space in another classroom or another environment? And then you mentioned more frequent cleaning. Are we talking about a lot in time for that person to have his or her room free so that the cleaning can take place in there? I want to understand that.
Yes, and Ms. Guthrie, those are both very good points there. And so with the workspace, obviously, yes, we would want to look at an alternative workspace. And in, you know, in all of our schools, we have different locations that we may consider. And of course, right off the top of my head, one of the first places would be the school auditorium. And I can't help but think about our, some of our music programs and that being a better fit or location because of the six-foot barrier. But with that, yes, we may want to allocate a different work location that's larger so that more social distancing can occurs, you know, greater than the six feet.
And in addition to that, when teachers express to their administrators that they think that they may have symptoms related to COVID-19, are we, are they given right away the opportunity to go to the health services to get checked, or will they be referred to the health department to get checked? And what would happen to the students that are in that classroom until we know for certain what the results are?
So if we have someone that reports to a teacher that, yes, they are exhibiting symptoms, the first thing that our administrators are going to tell the teacher are to go home and self-isolate. Then the administrator will contact Human Resources and my department, as well as Susan Neely and Health Services, will work with that employee to make sure that they're going to seek the appropriate medical attention that they need.
Would parents be notified at that time that there may be something in the classroom? Or would they just wait, or would you wait until you are sure from any type of tests that you may have administered or require of the teacher?
So with letting the parents know, that is going to be one thing that we continue to work through with Ms. McGraw. And because, obviously, we want our parents to know sooner than later. We don't want to keep any information from them. So we're working still on that, those scenario-type situations that we may encounter. And we know that we're going to encounter that same situation at some point. And obviously, we want our students to be, you know, safe and to have an opportunity, their parents to have an opportunity to test them. But we don't want to, and I don't think at this day and time that we won't cause some hysteria if we call home and say that, just simply because of the nature of this virus. But yes, we will have to let the parents know that the teacher is not feeling well and that the teacher has gone for a test. And then we will obviously go into that classroom and we will do a deep cleaning. There is specific guidance associated with cleaning that classroom if somebody is exhibiting symptoms or if someone has a positive COVID test. And we will follow that guidance, which is, first of all, staying out of that room for 24 hours and then going in and doing a deep cleaning.
And Ms. Guthrie, I'll add to what Mr. Clinton is saying, that we work with Mr. Eaton at the Health Department, and when we have any exposure or known potential exposure, the first thing we do is Dr. Boultonite and Mr. Clinton get engaged with Mr. Eaton and his team to say, this is how, with the exposure we have, what do you want us to do and how do we handle it? And it's a good working relationship between the two organizations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Clinton?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is this same protocol going to be for all of our other departments, employees in all the other departments, from maintenance to your department to nutrition, that as well? Or is that going to be adapted in any way?
The same protocols will exist throughout the district, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions for Mr. Clinton, we'll move to the operations. And this is, Dr. Hushard will talk through a number of areas of operations to include transportation, school nutrition, facilities, maintenance. So I'm going to let Dr. Hushard begin that part of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman Moore. We're members, Superintendent Booker. It is good to be with you all, the staff, June, and I do hope you well. I want to begin by saying how proud I am and honored to be associated with the hard-working, dedicated men in the room of the Auxiliary Services Divisions. Since March 13th, I've watched most of them report to work and take care of our facilities, our transportation fleet. They've fed our children and they've kept us safe and secure. So I know you all are as proud of these folks as I am and want to join me in saying thank you to them and their service. So the re-entry action taken to date, just want to mention that this is not an easy process, as Dr. Booker alluded to to begin our meeting and Joey has alluded to. It's not an easy process. It's a work in progress and there's constant change and updates. We can't go a day without getting a different update or a change. And I want you to know that with all of the Auxiliary Service Divisions, with our principals and our central leadership, it's a team effort and we're all in together. We're going to work through this and we're going to get through this. So Auxiliary Services, as you all know, is involved transportation, school nutrition, safety, security, facilities, and maintenance. And we will address each of these with a re-entry planning process we've talked about. First of all, transportation requirements. We feel like we've got to start with transportation because that's usually where our day starts in school and our day ends in school. With school is transportation. The state has given us guidance that we are allowed to have one passenger per seat on our yellow school buses. They've also said to date that we are allowed to have two passengers on contracted vehicles. And we transport a lot of students that way, think minivan. And the contractors that we use, there's three big ones in Gaston County are working to make sure that those vehicles are safe and potentially get more than two. And that face coverings are required by all students or staff who do ride these vehicles. We also have been told that if there is by chance a staff member or student who is unable to wear face coverings, that we have to ensure there's a sufficient social distancing in six foot in any vehicle they ride on. So we wanted to look at our numbers with transporting students. And the numbers, of course, we have are those numbers from last year. So last year, we transported 16,694 students in a year's time. And we know that our elementary ridership was 8,300, a little bit over 8,300 students. Our middle school ridership was just under 4,000, and our high school ridership was 4,412. So in looking at some models and how we can move kids to and from school in the morning and evening, we looked at a one-third model, which, if you just do simple math, of course, is looking at transporting 5,565 students a day. If we transported half of our students, that would be a number of 8,347. So that means if 50% of our students are coming to school on any given day, we are pretty sure, based on last year's numbers, 8,347 will ride. We know that 4,160 of those students make the elementary school, just shy of 2,000 are in middle school, and 2206 in high school. We wanted to look at our total number. So again, this number you saw before, 8,347, would be transporting half of our bus student riding population. We know that elementary school was 4,160. If we combine the middle and high school, that gives us a number of 4,186. We take all the buses in our fleet, we have 211 yellow buses that run every day. We know that 176 of those buses are 72-passenger vehicles, buses, which means they have 24 seats on them. We know that 16 of our buses have 60-passenger buses, meaning they have 20 seats. And then we have 19 buses that are 36-passenger buses, which can seat about 12. So our total number of seats we have in yellow buses is 4,772. So if you look, if we can go back one slide, please, real quick. If you look at that number of seats we have, 4,772, we can certainly cover transporting all the elementary school students in one set of runs, and we can transport combining the middle and high school students in one set of runs. Okay, thank you. Next slide. So to do this, we had to look at some times. What's it going to take to start picking up children, to have them delivered at school? And how are we going to have to set up these runs? And we decided to look at transporting elementary school in one set of runs, and that their bus routes would start to be picked up at 6:15, and we feel like we could pick up all of our elementary school students between 6:15 and 7:15, ensuring that they are at school ready to begin the day at 7:30 a.m. Their delivery home would start at 2:30 p.m. and would take about an hour to an hour and a half, beginning at 2:30 and ending by 3:30. And this is staying fairly close to what we have operated in the past, years past. Then we had to look at us making a second set of runs, and this would be middle school and high school in this model. And it's going to take us a little bit longer to pick up middle and high school, because if you think about it, we have less high schools, so their area of pickup and delivery is bigger. So we know we're going to have to start picking up some areas at 6:15, and we know that we can have all the children delivered to the high schools and middle schools by 8:15, which begins there, could begin their day at 8:30, and then we would start delivery of home in that process between 3:30 and 4:30. So you're looking at about another hour and a half between 3:30 and 5:00. All middle and high school students could be home. This model works as well if we tried to do a one-third of the students in our schools per day. This is an example of a model of what a school bus will look like. You notice that our buses have seats. Those seats traditionally sit three elementary or middle or two high school students in them, and the red dot indicates we will have a child in each seat, thus not utilizing two other spaces in those seats. Okay, so we know we're going to, we want to disinfect our buses after each load. So what we have done is we've allotted our drivers' time after each load, and they come back to the school. They're going to have the cleaner disinfect it, that's recommended by the CDC, approved by them. They're going to be able to wipe down all the touch areas of each bus. Think top of the rail and maybe the side. They don't need to necessarily wipe the seats that are sitting, but the touch points on the bus. Also, we are providing with each school a handheld electrostatic sprayer. So not only can the drivers, after each run, wipe down the touch points, but we can also run through the bus. It takes about 45 seconds to a minute with this electrostatic sprayer, which also will spray the entire bus. Windows are down. It's about a one-minute process. Three or four minutes later, it's dry, and then they're off to get their next run. And then again, we will be, have cleaning products, not only for each bus, every day we'll supplement that as needed for our schools as well. It's important to keep those clean and to keep them ready to go. School nutrition. We have decided we think less movement in the schools is better. So the more that we can keep our kids from being in the hallways, which you're going to find in a moment or two, might be a difficult, harder task for us to accomplish. We're going to deliver the breakfasts and lunches to each child in their classroom. Child nutrition staff will have carts. It will be the same that the children are used to in a normal year, what they got last year, just going to look at different, going to be packaged a little differently. And we are, we will maintain a grab-and-go process or model. We can't really, we have several different ways to maintain that grab-and-go where students who are not at school can come and either pick up a meal with their parents or walk to the school and grab a meal, or we can send some home on a day when we know they're not going to be there the next couple of days. That model's going to be very dependent on what our school schedule looks like. We are going to accommodate a grab-and-go process for all students to have home that need it. Okay, facilities and maintenance. We are providing guidance for all of our custodians and our administrators with the cleaning procedures and products. They need to know what they're using, how to use it, when to use it. We're going to train everyone involved at the school. We are going to provide plenty of hand soap, towels, and hand sanitizer. We know we're going to have to teach our kids the importance of washing hands, and our adults, washing hands and washing them regularly. It is the best way to not spread COVID via the hands, and we're going to have plenty of soap and towels for them to do so. So that's going to be a program that not only is going to help us short-term, but that's going to help them as they grow with a lifelong skill as well. And we will, again, provide plenty of training for code staff, and if they're not comfortable, we will bring back training for that as well. All right, so we are providing to schools signage. We're going to have entrance signs. If you can see the orange board on your screen there, it's a sandwich board, if you will. And it basically is announcing that we are adhering to some COVID rules and restrictions about, it can say masks and keeping social distance and using the hand sanitizer in the building. And we hope to have those entrance signs at, one at the main entrance where car riders get off, one at the entrance where bus riders will depart, and then many schools will have several of those in the hallway, reminding students and staff that we are adhering to COVID rules. There will be spaced floor indicators, and you see a roll of it, the yellow tape. We have many we're going to give to each school, and that's where they can basically safely put that down on, in any interior floor we have, whether it be carpet or tile, and it will be a spacing marker for where folks might tend to congregate in big numbers. We're thinking the front office or an entrance or exit to our buildings. And then we're going to have directional signs, as you see at the bottom, arrows basically indicating which direction we want folks to move in spaces, areas, and hallways. We're also ordering plenty of signage for our schools to remind folks about social distancing, keeping six foot apart. I really like the Healthy Habits poster that's going to go up in walls, reminding students and faculty staff, you need to wash your hands, cover our cough, wear our masks. And then the big sign, big poster is Stop the Spread of Germs, and this is a CDC publication that's more poster-like that will go throughout our schools as well. So we set up some glass, plexiglass partitions in a lot of our schools, but we, I want to thank Trine Elementary and Forestview High School for allowing us to come in and spend some time and to, for them to set up a model so that we can look at. I think it's important to go through this process and these procedures we're going to have to set up in our schools and that the principals work through it, and then now we can all talk and visit schools and get good ideas from each other. But what you're seeing here is just the many different front offices we have. So the one on the left, of course, is Trine, and one on the right is Forestview. Some of them are lower, some are higher. We've got plexiglass shields that sit on top. We actually have them that hang down from the ceiling. So we think if you are receptionist and you're sitting behind the desk, you'll have your mask on, you'll have the plexiglass shields in front, no one will come six foot close to you, because we'll have the floor mark where people are supposed to stop, and then the visitors who they're talking to will also have a face mask on. We want to make sure that these folks, we're going to see a lot of people in a day, have a level, measure of security and feel safe while they're doing so. So this is a typical classroom setup. This is, I believe, a second-grade classroom at Trine Elementary School. This classroom generally has 20 students with 20 desks. So Principal DeFevers basically took out half her desk, 10, and kept 10 in the room to see if we could keep our kids, our desks, at six-foot spacing, and we can do it. So half your students come in this particular classroom, as 10 students, their desks are, of course, six foot apart. Where you might run into a little issue is when kids have to move, and that's going to take a lot of work, a lot of effort on all of our parts, the kids, the teachers, administrators. But we need to always think about the flow, how students are going to move. So spent some time at Forestview High School as well, and I don't think it's conceivable for us to move all of our desks, 20,000 desks, out of rooms and put them in places. So we wanted to come up with a way, again, this is just one way, but a way where we could mark desks. So we wanted to come up with a way, again, this is just one way, but a way where we could mark desks so that students don't sit in them, and then you you have desks that students will occupy. This is a classroom of thirty desks. So we basically had to mark off fifteen if we do fifty percent. We we the principal and I had to rearrange this classroom multiple times to get it to work. This is one view. That the one on your left is the view of us marking a desk. And here is a view from the classroom. So we had to change them from running for, lack of a better term, north and south in the classroom and divide them and make sure they're they're facing different directions, and so that no one was sitting so close. So we also did the same thing with tables, because we know a lot of our classrooms have tables, and you can see where students will be sitting at the end of a six-foot table apart. The books indicate where a student may sit. So we've got that set up at Forestview, and again, Ms. Hauser and I spent some time and now have a model we can share with the principals. Flow, this is a flow and directional diagram. It's to minimize congestion, and we are working with leadership. And and folks, this is going to take a lot of work and a lot of thinking, and we're walking through with with principals to help work on this, but how are we going to get traffic flowing through our building? We know our buildings, they're not, they're not, they've not all been built in the last ten years, so they're smaller. Hallways tend not to be as wide as newer facilities. So we're going to, each school is going to have a map of their school, the internals, the hallways, and then we're going to really work on how we're going to get kids from point A to point B in a flow. So it's just some overall building considerations that we talk about with, often with the principals, is traffic flow. We know our parking lots are going to look different. In typical elementary school, you have six cars pull up, six doors will open, six kids get out, and then they herd through into the front door. That's not going to be an option anymore. So we're going to have to talk about student drop-off, pickup, traffic cones. We're providing dozens of traffic cones each of our schools so they can help traffic flow. Is student drop-off a bus drop-off? That's going to have to look different, other than open the door and let everybody go. Security our entrances, and we are not taking this lightly, but just because we have this thing COVID going on and and people are wearing masks and glasses doesn't mean our security is going to be any less at our entrances. And then, as I said, the big one that we're continuing to work through is movement of students in our hallways, bathrooms, classrooms, et cetera. So Dr. Booker, Chairman Moore, that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any questions, Dr. Hushard? Ms. Guthrie, you're on mute, Ms. Guthrie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first of all, I too, Dr. Hushard, would like to thank the employees that participated in Grab and Go. I thought that went well this summer, and we did make a concerted effort to meet the needs of our children. But I am very, very concerned about some of the things that you shared with us this afternoon. First and foremost, you did mention that the children will be seated in the center seat on each of the buses. Will there be a monitor on the bus, and how will, will there be a temperature check when the students, before they board the buses?
So and again, yes, great question. We have, we are working to develop that. We have, we know there are at the station statements that parents can sign and bring to the bus. We we would, we would certainly like to have adults on the bus, but we also know that our staff at our school is going to be very stressed out with spacing staff out to make sure that we're monitoring safe and social distance and behaviors in our in our schools. So
Well, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when pickup is going to start at six-fifteen a.m. From six-fifteen a.m. to seven-fifteen a.m., those children riding the buses will be picked up. Will there be someone physically on that bus in addition to the bus driver to temperature check and to monitor whether or not those children are actually sitting where they are supposed to sit? Because we all know that children are sometimes will not adhere to some of the rules, and we need to make sure that those children are sitting in that center seat, and we may need to make sure that there's a monitor on that bus to see that the rules are followed. And another thing that you mentioned in your presentation in regards to the bus, you said that the bus drivers would have some time to wipe down the touch areas. I I just feel like, and and maybe I'm just wrong, but I feel like that seat needs to be wiped as well before you spray. We need to make sure that we are comprehensive as we take every healthy and safety precaution for these babies. If it doesn't take that long, we are all going to have to make a sacrifice. We are all going to have to do a little bit more, and I just feel like there should be someone on that bus in addition to that bus driver. That bus driver cannot safely drive and navigate traffic and make certain that the children are sitting where they need to sit and to see whether or not that child has a temperature.
Yes, ma'am, and we are working towards that end. It's just
But we need to have some information concrete, because we are expected to say to our greater guests and community today, whether we do B or whether we do C, and we cannot do that. We cannot be, make a decision as important as this decision is without having some resolution.
Yes, ma'am, and I have seen, we are actually entertaining plans with with assistants at the school and other teachers modifying days, but we we are working toward that end. We know, listen, driving that bus is not an easy task. A lot of us have done it for years, and they need to be focused, to your point, on the road and maintaining children's safety as they exit and enter the bus. And yes, ma'am, I couldn't agree more.
But the transportation part, I'm just not happy with.
Yeah. The I do want to say as well, the electrostatic sprayers are designed to get the big bulk areas, like the seats, and they are designed, we are told, will handle like the bigger spaces and the touch points, cleaning the touch points is just an added measure of safety for that as well.
Now, are you going to talk about the the cleaning solutions that the custodians need to have in the classrooms as well, or was that part of the report that you've already presented?
No, ma'am. We we have a disinfectant by Oak Facilities. It's called an E-23 Disinfectant. It is listed by the CDC as effective. We have the dispensers in all the schools, and we have spray bottles, and they'll be marked with what the product is and the ingredients of it, and that is the product we use from start to finish, and there are, again, we have it in schools and have real-time delivery when they start to run low, so that will never be a problem. We have that product on hand from Seven Oaks, and we'll be delivering that product out. And that's part of the training we will give to custodians and bus drivers. In fact, I think Mr. Clinton and his crew are putting a training session on our our new Safe Schools website for that as well.
So do we have the square footage of the school? And do we know right now how many custodians are in each of the schools, and do we know what the cleaning schedules are for each of the schools? I've been in schools long enough to know that in some schools custodians will clean a classroom in the morning, and they won't return to that classroom until the very next day. So what happens throughout the day as far as the cleaning and the disinfecting? And then I have also been in schools where we start the school year out. We're all excited, and we have all of the supplies that we need. But then about thirty, forty days later, and I'm just paraphrasing that just to prove my point, we we start asking for solutions, and then we're slow about giving the teachers what they would need in order for them to feel safe, first and foremost, for those babies that are in that classroom. So if we are making a promise to say that we're going to provide all the disinfectant supplies and the hand wash and all of that, then we need to know that we have all of those things, and teachers are not going to have to worry about getting those things later. We cannot afford to procrastinate. Also, what happens if we have a child return to school and has no mask? You may be able to give a child a mask. What happens if little Johnny does not bring back that mask? Or will they be disposable masks? What happens if a parent brings a child in late and suns in? Will he, will he or she be told that before we open the door, once that bell rings, you must have your mask on? What happens if a high school or a middle school refuses to wear that mask before they get on the bus?
Okay, so let me start with custodians, ma'am. We have a custodial cleaning process that they will go through. We know it's going to take some of our teachers and teacher assistants to help with wipe and down surface areas. What a custodian traditionally has done is going to look different, because first and foremost, they're going to make sure our areas and our classrooms are safe. And again, that may require teachers and assistants to help us with that, lend a helping hand. We know we're going to have facilities and services that will help assist custodians when they need more of that. Masks, I do want to tell you that we, Gaston County Schools, has five washable, re-wearable masks per student. The state has said they are sending us five more washable masks per student, so in essence, each student will have, will have on hand ten masks that are good for twenty-five washings. So that should cover school day. We have almost a hundred thousand disposable masks. Bus drivers will have them. Front offices will have them, and we will be handing them out to any and everybody who does not have a mask, number one, or needs a mask as well.
So on day one, I'm just sorry, I just need to hear this.
Yes.
So on day one, every student or every school, based on student enrollment, that principal would have at least five masks per student?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Guthrie. That was part of the governor's decree when he said that he wanted to see us go back to school. They have allocated funding to buy five masks for every employee and every student at all of our schools.
Now, what about the restrooms? Because we're talking about disinfectant, disinfectant again. And if those restrooms are not clean regularly, I'm concerned about that. It is not the teacher's responsibility to be wiping down a classroom when we want them to be teaching. That's the reason why we have heard from so many parents. They feel like the learning loss is there, and our teachers need to be doing what they were told that they needed and expected to do. So I hear, based on the reply, that we are adding another job for our teachers. It's just not fair.
We have a cleaning schedule for restrooms. They will, they will be hit at a minimum every hour for wipe down in our schools, classrooms. If if students come in and actually stay in their classroom all day, there's not going to be a lot of wipe down. So we know our custodial staff can, every day, at the end of the day, we can clean touch areas, we can clean the 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 classrooms, and of course, we have the backpack sprayer as well. But again, if there's not a lot of movement, we're going to, we know we're going to have to clean more classrooms if they change classes, like they would in the middle or high school. But but each classroom will be, when when one group of students is done with that room, and a new student group will be coming in, we have procedures for that. Yes, ma'am, and it will be done.
We know, one more thing, and I'm through. We know that parents may not be able to, because of the pandemic and unemployment. Usually, teachers will have a wish list, and children oftentimes will bring in the little tissue and the hand sanitizer. So are you saying that the classrooms will have that, or so that we won't have to worry about taxing our parents for those supplies this year?
Yes, ma'am. Every classroom will have sand sanitizer issued to the teacher. Hallways will have them, offices will have them, and we have big half-gallon type hand pumps. We hope to teach, the teachers can take teachable moments and talk to kids about how to use it, when to use it, but yes, ma'am, that will all be supplied in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Mr. Devin?
All right, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, I have two quick questions. One of them is, Morgan, the people that we contract with our transportation, are they required to submit some sanitizing plan to you?
You mean, you mean the contracted for the the contract vans?
Right.
Yes, sir, they do. They they have guidelines like we do to follow and here too, and they are trying to work on that, so that two is stressing, they're trying to make, see if they can set up barriers inside their vans, if you will, so they can haul more than two students. That's a DOT, you know, Kennedy Safety, and then it will be approved by the Department of Public Security. But yes, sir, they they adhere to all those.
Question is, I just want to say it out loud, that Highland students were going to go, just like we did last year, and they will all report to the high schools, and then will be transported over to Highland Tech. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that will happen, and we are working with those high schools who receive those students, the home high schools, if you will, and the staging areas, and a lot of them is going to be the cafeteria in some places, but there will be a place where those students, and it's usually, I'm told, never more than twenty, will be able to be until the Highland bus and the early public bus can pick them up and transport them.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Dr. Booker? Thank you, Dr. Hushard. And Ms. Guthrie, I will say that you brought up a litany of questions that are being debated throughout, and you're you're spot on with a lot of the issues that you raise and discussions that have been held and continue to be held. And you're correct when you say transportation is the challenge that as we try to operate schools. What we wanted to talk about was our stakeholder input and feedback that we have gathered since your last meeting. And I want to thank our entire community, our remote learning survey, which was a different survey, it was really a reflection on the past remote learning we've done. We received over seven-thousand-six-hundred parent responses and over nine-hundred-and-fifty faculty responses, and so I thank them for that participation, which gave us great data. But the data we're going to talk about is meeting with individuals beyond our meeting from July sixth. And as you heard during public comment, we have a good relationship with our NCAE organization, and they put together a group of twenty-seven teachers for us to meet with and have feedback from. We also met with our principal administrators. We had an excellent parent advisory with great comments and participation. And then we met with our district leadership to have them react to various plans. What we did to begin all of those conversations was to go back through and say, just from a high-level view, what is your reaction to Plan A? Many parents shared that they would be comfortable if we had a Plan A. Many of the administrators said, how would we make it operate? When we looked at Plan B, majority of parents shared that they would be comfortable with this option, and this was the one that had a lot of discussion in all of the groups as we talked about them. And then finally, in Plan C, remote, many parents were not comfortable with this option because of the barriers that are known in our community, as well as the difficulty in what they had seen in the spring with remote learning. So then we offered some options to get feedback, and one that we spent time on was an A-B day rotation. And what this says is that you divide us into two cohorts of fifty percent of our students, and Cohort A would receive face-to-face instruction on Monday and Tuesday. Cohort B would be remote on Monday and Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, both groups would be remote, and the buildings would be empty for a good cleaning and a twenty-four-hour period with no occupancy by students, which would then allow on Thursday and Friday for Cohort B to receive face-to-face instruction while Cohort A would be in remote. So that was what we presented. And we also showed where a group came total for a week and then was out for a week, and it was in every other week to get feedback. And this chart summarizes the overall responses. Teachers were favorable with an A-B day rotation and did not favorable with the weekly rotation, as well as administrators. And then district level were favorable with the A-B, and some were favorable with this. The big driving thing about the weekly rotation is not having that weekly touch. So you would go almost ten days between touches with the student, depending on where they were in the rotation, and that was a concern for people. Additional feedback that we received was our ninety-three percent of the parents that were involved in various conversations talked about that they were confident that Gaston County Schools was the place they wanted to receive their educational services in our community. Our teachers talked about that with an eighty-five percent rate that they felt comfortable that they could deliver remote instruction. But the teachers also said that fifty-four percent of them talked about the social and emotional burden of this, and that that is weighed on them in a number of ways. And and there are really stories that could talk about this, that where, you know, they're worried about the kids they haven't been able to see, the kids they haven't been able to interact with, and they're worried about their own to interact with, and they're worried about their own, the stability in our community. And that goes into the 72% teachers' expressed concern, not only for their own health, but what does it mean in the larger health of the people that they're responsible for, and what they take home with them to the folks that they're the primary caregivers for. So there was a lot of information on that. We, we had met with a group of students, and we talked about that there were some considerations. Should we only bring in, uh, younger students, K-2, K-4, whatever we could make buildings work on? And, uh, coupled with adamant, I would prefer to have some time in school, I need to be in school, I would like to. A parent, when we talked about that, said, for students' mental health, they need to be back in the building at least for some port, part-time basis. And so that was the, the feedback we've gotten. And I also want to comment, I have received hundreds of emails and communication from our community, and I, I want to just thank you for the respectful dialogue that has been shared and, and the appreciation for the difficulty of all this that folks would present. And then they would offer their insights and what they said, and talking about the challenges for their student learning online, or the success their child had online, and could we continue that option. Concerns about if my student is online, what does that mean to their interaction with their home school and the, the community that they, that they run? So we have a lot of, uh, different feedback that we've gotten, and I just want everyone to know, all of those have been received, they have been reviewed, and we have tried to catalog those and have a feel for where it was. And as we talked with the board on July 6th, one of the statewide surveys said, this is a, an issue that we have no majority. Some folks say we should be back in school totally, some folks feel blended, and some folks feel remote. So I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone that is listening and to the board, all those emails that you forward, we have been reviewing those and sharing and taking those comments very seriously, and I appreciate what has been given to us. This next is what, you know, what we're all here for, and that's our instructional work. And before Dr. Balknight gets, you know, she's going to talk about a number of things, but we're going to start with enrollment. And I want to allow Ms. Terry Surbeck to start us off with just talking about enrollment and registration in general, and then Dr. Balknight will come in and cover all of our academic things. So Ms. Surbeck?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Chairman Moore, Vice Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker, and Board members. As the beginning of school closely approaches, the Office of Student Assignment has been speaking with families that have children that are currently enrolled with us, and also families that are new to our county that are enrolling their children into our school system. These families are asking numerous questions as they navigate through the uncertainty of what this school year will look like for their children and their entire family. We all know our goal is that our children are offered a familiar environment and consistency in order that we provide them a successful school year. So we ask, what do we, as Gaston County Schools, do to assure that these, this goal is accomplished for all of our families? We have put a no-place status in for all of our students. This means several things. Students that are currently enrolled, enrolled in a school may choose to remain at that school. All students that attend a school outside of their home district on approved transfers will remain in place for the entire school year. Also, students that are attending schools on a residence affidavit may continue to attend that school without going through any process of renewals. New students that would typically be required to obtain a residence affidavit will be asked to upload documents pertaining to where they are currently residing and will find immediate enrollment. New students to our school system will be able to enroll on our online platform at the convenience of their home. All communication with these families can be done through the Office of Student Assignment and the schools through this platform. Parents can easily access that link from the homepage of our website. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Surbeck.
Thank you.
Dr. Balknight?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Moore, Superintendent Booker, and members of the board. Today, I will share with you an update on our instructional expectations for the 2020, 2021 school year. The instructional expectations have been adjusted based on stakeholder feedback from our spring emergency remote learning plan. This plan is based on guidelines in accordance with Governor Cooper's order to open schools using Option B. Administrators, teachers, and district staff are training and planning every day to provide the best educational experience in these unusual times. Here you will see a sample schedule of a typical day when we have in-person instruction for students. These are sample schedules with our shortened possible weeks that we will talk about further, based again on our guidance from Governor Cooper. If you'll go back, Ms. Stevens. If you'll notice on the slide, they have a typical day. A morning meeting is our social-emotional time, which is going to be very important as we return back to school. So in a K-2 classroom, they will focus on phonics, then have their math instruction, reading workshop. They will also have recess during that time as well. That's important, a critical part of the day. And then they'll have some flex time for reading and math. And in those flex times, that will be where we will work with students individually based on their needs. So if they need some additional support to get caught up, they'll get that help, but also if they are ready to move forward, they'll get opportunities to do enrichment activities, and that is reflective of K-5. So our instructional schedule for an A-A-B-B day, which would mean potentially that kids would come for a certain amount of days during the week and then work from home the other parts of the day. Again, this is the breakdown of the schedule that we discussed just a moment ago with the morning meeting, which is so important for the social and emotional learning, and then the phonics. You'll notice here that in K-2, they'll have 130 minutes in reading and phonics and 115 minutes as well in 3-5. That is the typical amount of minutes that we use in a traditional school year.
Dr. Balknight?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what is the role, what will the role of the school counselors be when you're doing social and emotional learning?
Our counselors are working and have been trained as well on morning meetings. Some of our counselors, in fact, lead that at the elementary level. In addition, however, they'll still have their specials time, and in elementary school, our counselors go into the classroom. We do have a curriculum that they use now, and they will continue to do that on some type of schedule. It will look a little different, potentially because students will not be in school every day, but they will still have access to those supports. We also have, we're in the process of hiring two lead counselors, one that will work specifically just with elementary students, and then one that will work to support our middle and high school counselors because we know the needs as children transition back will be so great.
Thank you.
So again, here, you'll see with our mathematics, we will have some small group instruction time. They will receive the strongest portions of the curriculum during the face-to-face time in mathematics. So for example, in a grade level where fractions may be so critical to their understanding, we are repacing our content to make sure that the kids receive that information during their face-to-face time in the classroom. And again, they'll have flex time for reading and math, which is what is described here so that children will have additional support to accelerate or to get additional support if they need additional guidance. They, of course, will have science and social studies, which are so critical, and they'll do that for 20 minutes in K-2 and 25 minutes in 3-5. And as I just mentioned to Ms. Guthrie, they will have their specials, P.E., music, and art. Also, they'll actually get to go to the media center as well, and they'll see their counselor as a part of that rotation. So here you see that on the days, potentially, students, for example, in K-1 that would not come to school, they would be working from home, they would still get some face-to-face time through their learning management system with their teachers to do the morning meeting. And that is really all about building relationships with kids, allowing the kids to be able to see each other if they have access to the internet at home as well. And then they will have their E.L.A. and math support. It will not be as many minutes. We've gotten a lot of feedback from teachers and parents, the concern, the amount of time that we use iReady in the spring. So you will notice here, 30 minutes a week on iReady for math and 30 minutes a week on iReady for reading. So that is very pared down in comparison to what some used in the spring for those areas. And then science and social studies will be 15 minutes, and again, they'll have the P.E., music, and art. It will look different when they're working from home in those activities. It could be a project, it could be some directions to do some, do a scavenger hunt, or some of those things that they were, they'll be able to do from home. So as you look at the instructional information here, it is very similar to the schedule that I've just described, however, has morning meeting and the reading, 35 minutes daily, and the mathematics 15 minutes. So you can see that while we have instruction for children when they're working remotely, it is not the six-hour day that you would have if you're doing the face-to-face instruction. During this time, students would do the follow-up. So if they've worked on fractions, for example, in the face-to-face days, they may do some independent practice on these days and then get some follow-up feedback from their teachers in that 15-minute timeframe when teachers are touching their students for the day. You'll go to the next slide, Ms. Stevens. Here's a sample of a middle school schedule. So you'll see, for example, there's a Cohort A in pink, and there's a Cohort B in the green color. And so Cohort A would be onsite Monday, Tuesday, for example. They would have the typical middle school day with advisory. Again, that's where they build connections with their teachers and their counselors, and take care of all those other things that are non-curricular but are very important to students. And then they would have their first block of instruction, have their regular four-block schedule, they would have their encore electives as they typically do, they would have a 30-minute lunchtime in this proposed schedule in the classroom, as Dr. Hushard discussed earlier. On Wednesday, it would be remote for all middle school students in this schedule, so they would work to catch up on things that they had during the week. Teachers would continue to have their office hours, touch base with students if need to, and continue to do professional development and prepare for the students that will come in Cohort B on Thursday and Friday, and they would have a similar schedule. Here's a sample high school schedule. Again, the cohort models with Cohort A and Cohort B, you see that Wednesday's a remote day. The schedule was slightly different just, uh, because of the times. Dr. Hushard also talked about the potential of a staggered start, so some of the times that I have reflected on my sample schedules could change slightly so that we can get all the students to school in a timely manner on the bus, and I'll have some sample times and a staggered schedule in just a moment to share with you. So here is, uh, I think, a good breakdown for you to visualize. Students in Cohort A will physically attend school on Monday and Tuesday, potentially from 8:00 to 3:30. They'll have four 90 minutes of instructional time per course with the teacher. They'll have lunch in their third-period classroom, so they'll remain in that classroom for lunch. They will then have some remote instruction potentially on that Wednesday, but will do a lot of independent work on that day, and they will continue to work and get feedback from their teachers on Thursday, Friday through the Canvas, which is our learning management system. So Cohort A would go to school two days of the week, the other three they would work remotely, someone independently for the remainder of the week, and then Cohort B would do just the opposite. On Monday, Tuesday, they would work independently, following up on things from the previous week, and then, of course, catching up on things on Wednesday, getting some office hour time from teachers if they needed, and then on Thursday, Friday, they would go back to school to get new instruction. So we have physical versus virtual learning environments. So at school, students will receive instruction based on the core standards for learning. They'll receive live, small-group, and individualized instruction from teachers in a classroom setting. They'll also get to spend time with their peers. They'll have time to use, to use for hands-on activities and application of content to demonstrate mastery. That is so critical with these abbreviated weeks that we make sure that we can have students demonstrate mastery before they move on, because they'll have a lot of independent practice time as well. And they'll receive 90 minutes of instruction per class. On the days that they are at home, they'll work as I described previously. We also have another option for students, our online students that choose to participate in the Virtual Academy, for example, will receive instruction based on the core standards for learning, which is the same as the face-to-face student. They'll receive pre-designed instruction through the learning management system of Canvas, 612 and School of G-K5. These activities may include videos, projects, interactive labs, other activities that students will get materials to take home when they're in school, or prior to doing that unit when they come to school, and they can work independently. They will be required to complete their individual learning plans daily, and they will receive 30 to 45 minutes of instruction per class, but they're also able to get additional time with the teacher through a virtual environment if they need that support.
Dr. Balknight?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the students will have the opportunity to have that time with their classroom teachers. Please mention whether or not parents would have the opportunity to monitor the progression of the students via Canvas and, uh, School of G.
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the great things that we're excited about with the learning management systems, Canvas and School of G, is that parents will be trained as well at the beginning of the school year on both of those platforms, depending on the grade level of their students, so that parents will know what to look for. There'll be notes in there from the teacher, they've submitted and uploaded assignments, and they're on track, or they need some additional work submitted. Parents will also be able to communicate with the teachers in the same manner back. They will instantly be able to see things that have been graded or given feedback so that everyone will be in the loop. That is one of our goals, and some of the feedback from the spring is that we need to train our parents on the learning management systems and how to support their students at home. So that'll be a key piece that we'll do at the beginning of the school year.
Dr. Balknight, this is Justin Davis. How you doing?
I'm doing good.
Um, can we back up to your prior slide? I, um, I had a question about that. Um, yes, ma'am, that one there, thank you. Um, so if I understand correctly, we've got, let's look at Cohort A, for example, on, on Monday. Those students are going to be in the classroom, um, and we've got, and they're getting 90 minutes of instructional time per course with the teacher. Um, looking down below, we've got 45 minutes of instructional time with the teacher for student Cohort B. Um, will those students in Cohort B be watching live classroom instruction? Will that be something different? Explain to me how that works.
So that's the part that we're going to have to develop with each individual school. For example, at the elementary level, there could be some teachers, if they pair together, that would work with the students that are not in school in those physical days, and they would be providing that instruction. In high school, as we build a schedule, we'll have to work based on course. For example, we know there'll be a lot of students taking Math 1, so we possibly could pair Math 1 teacher so that one is actually providing the instruction, the support to the student Cohort B when they're at home on Monday, Tuesday. However, if it's a singleton course, then the teacher may have to push things out to Canvas and also during their planning and other times work with those students. We do not have a plan at this time to livestream courses during the school day. So it'd be two separate occasions that teachers would be working with students. Does that answer your question, Mr. Davis?
Um, it, it gets part of the way there, but it sounds like it's also a work in progress. So I assume that, that more information will come, and there'll be more details worked out on a class-by-class basis and a grade level by grade level basis, depending upon what the needs are.
Our goal is to not, as Ms. Guthrie described earlier, to not have our teachers in multiple places at one time, and as Ms. Surbeck described, to make sure we take care of our families. So once we get feedback from our families of virtual or face-to-face and all those things, then we will work with our schools to schedule students to maximize instructional time with teachers and not have teachers working in multiple areas at one time. That is our goal.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, um, as you add to that goal, Dr. Balknight, uh, will teachers have adequate time to learn those, uh, Canvas, how to use Canvas and, uh, School of G? Because I don't know whether or not, uh, do you have that worked into a schedule where they can feel comfortable when they, uh, create their classrooms in School of G or Canvas?
We are training teachers now, and we are actually, um, supporting some of our teachers to be the leaders of the work, to build what we're calling a blueprint, so that each course will have a basic, similar content, and the teachers can build. That's the difference between the art and the science. We're going to build basically the standard course of study in there, and then they're going to add additional things that they see fit to teach their course in a way that they choose. This is unusual to your point, Ms. Guthrie, that we ask teachers in the month of July to come in for professional development or to complete those things online. You've received feedbacks for, from some teachers, I have as well, and we've said to them that these are unusual times, and we need for them to train in the summer to be prepared. So it is a work in progress. We did purchase Canvas and School of G, and we have been training teachers as soon as we were able to receive those things, and we're continuing to work with teachers, and we'll be doing that up until school starts, because it, it is a process, and it will still be a learning curve for teachers as school begins.
Thank you.
Dr. Balknight?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, uh, foresee increasing the numbers in the virtual? Are you gonna, is it still going to stay capped at 2,000?
We are, as Ms. Surbeck said, working with families. So we are prepared to work with teachers to fill the needs in the virtual school as well in the physical classroom. Again, that Again, that is two to three weeks away. When we finalize, hopefully, with our Board of Education, what our school year will look like so that parents can make decisions and finalize whether enrollment in the virtual school or they remain enrolled in their physical school and do the flexible schedule with the blended learning.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Devin?
Yes, sir. Dr. Baughnite?
Yes, sir.
In the spring, the students that I talked to, they were given an option of participating in what they call were specials. And hopefully, these teachers can provide instruction based on their curriculum. Is that going to happen again, or did I get that right?
I'm glad that you asked that, Mr. Devin. And one of the things that we did do in remote learning is we pulled together things as a district, and we focused on the core content areas. And then our special teachers added things, and so they weren't as consistent across the district, and we acknowledge that. This summer, as we're pulling people in for training for School of G and Canvas, we're pulling every content area in. No content area will be left untouched and prepared for school. So they will all have equal access to students as outlined in the sample schedules.
All right. I thank you. I just think that's really an important thing that we do that.
I agree. We all agree. That's the feedback from the stakeholders.
School of G has a platform, a very special module for special area teachers. I saw that.
Yes, ma'am. And so our teachers are being trained, and they're working together as collaborative teams to put assignments in, and then they'll build their course out how they see fit. But that is a non-negotiable moving forward. All teachers are getting the training and the support consistently across the district, not just specific teachers. So here are some of the feedback, additional feedback that we received from parents, concern about screen time. So we've done some research with American Pediatric Association, and we have here guidelines for us. So our elementary students, when they're not in school, their screen time will be up to one-point-five hours a day. And then middle school, two hours a day. We do not have any specific recommendations for the high school age group. We, however, though, will like to do the three hours. So as you can see, recommend it based on age. And then for us, K-two, sixty-five minutes, Three-Five, one hour and forty-five minutes a day, two hours for middle school, and up to three hours per day. So the recommendation is one-point-five. We're going to do sixty-five minutes for K-two, and we think that's appropriate. And then in Three-Five, an hour and forty-five minutes. In fact, in our K-two program for the virtual, we actually have kits that we're going to send home with those families to also minimize the screen time and also to work with families that may not have as much access to the internet.
Speaking of the internet, can we talk about, or is this another presentation? The hotspots and all of that?
Ms. Guthrie, I will speak briefly. Dr. Slutsky may be available to add additional information. I will share with you some good news that we've been using and working through that process in summer school. And we've had great response to summer school. It was not required for many of our students, even our high schools, but it was a way for them to review last semester because of the unusualness of the semester or to prepare for the fall. And so for families and students that did not have access to the internet, in elementary, for example, we were able to save the information on a jump drive and give that child the device and the jump drive to have the information at home, even though they didn't have internet access. So we have found a workaround to work with our students. So as students come in for those flex days potentially, that's when they would get their new jump drive to work on the things they need to independently at home. We also have been told that we can upload those things directly now to the Chromebook. So we are working on a workaround, because we don't intend to leave any children behind. This is not emergency remote learning. This is planned. So we're paying for those things.
Great.
So virtual versus blended instruction. So you can see here on the left-hand side, the virtual in K-twelve, a hundred percent of the time, students will receive instruction through the learning management systems of Canvas or School of G. The instructional model will be in the form of learn about it, practice it, and evidence of learning. So then they will upload their work to prove that they have mastered that content, so that the teacher that's supporting and working with them will know that they can move on, or we need to reach out to them to have some FaceTime on the computer to get them where they need to be with that content. Teachers will schedule at least a hundred and twenty minutes of virtual face-to-face instruction in a small group setting per week. We also allow those children to come together as a group to work together collaboratively if they would like. Fifty percent of the time in the blended model, which is very different, it's a fifty-fifty split. So in the blended model, fifty percent of the time, students will receive instruction through the learning management system of Canvas, Six Twelve, and School of G K five. The instructional model will be the same as I just shared. Learn about it, practice it, and evidence of learning. Students will be required to complete their individual learning plan daily. Teachers will schedule remote face-to-face instruction in small group settings as needed when the students are not in school. When the students are live in the classroom, they will go back to that sample schedule that I shared earlier. Well, they will receive live, small-group, and individualized instruction from teachers in a classroom setting. That's also when our special area teachers will come in, our elective teachers, our ESL teachers and others to work with students as well. This is an overall Plan B at a glance, and now I will go through each section of this so that we can see the different components. So you will see here, this is sort of an outline of what we've talked about. You can see K-twelve, that basically with reduced capacities, Dr. Hushard has talked about, cohort A would be fifty percent of the student body, and cohort B would be the other fifty percent of the student body that decided to come to school in a blended environment and did not choose to do the virtual, which would be completely at home and away from school. So cohort A would be face-to-face potentially on Monday through Tuesday, remote learning Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's consistent K-twelve. Cohort B would be just the opposite of that. They'd be face-to-face Thursday through Friday, remote learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Again, consistent K-twelve. Remote learning for all students in Gaston County. So all students would be in a remote environment on Wednesday. There'd be no students in the schools on Wednesday for teachers to continue with their professional development and for us, of course, to clean the schools. And you can see here at the bottom, we do have another option for families, a hundred percent virtual, which is our virtual school learning option for our families as well. Technology distribution, that's one of the things that we work through in the spring. But again, this is planned instruction, so we will have a process to distribute technology to students the very first week of school. The same week that we're distributing those devices to students will also be when we train our students on how to use the learning management system depending on their level and also train the parent. So that will take place in the first week of school. And then we will, again, work with our families. Teachers will rotate into the classrooms as much as possible in the elementary school. And in middle school, they will have limited movement. And at class changes, teachers will monitor for appropriate social distancing, which I think was one of the questions or comments earlier. So for as much as possible in the elementary environment, for example, currently, this past school year, under normal circumstances, the counselor a lot of times would go into the classroom. So what we're saying is that when teachers need to come in, the counselor, the music teacher, and those other areas, they would go into the classroom, whereas before, our music kids would leave the classroom. They will go in with protective equipment on to limit the movement of the students in the elementary, who will also limit movement in middle school. And then teachers will have to really monitor at the high school. It's just not feasible to say that high school students would remain in the classroom, maybe in a small high school like the early, Gaston Early College. But for a typical high school, that's not feasible.
Dr. Baughnite?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the Chromebooks be loaded with other learning apps that would support math, science, reading, et cetera?
We are working with our technology support services to load whatever apps that we need to based on feedback from families as to what their needs are. If they can go out to the internet, we have worked really hard this past spring and changed a lot of our contracts. So, for example, in elementary and middle, we now have Discovery Ed for science, for example. So they will have a textbook. So if they have access to the internet, they will use that. But if there's a student that does not have access, then we'll load those things either on the Chromebook or on a jump stick, so that they'll have those things when they're working from home that week.
Thank you.
Dr. Baughnite, can you cover virtual learning a little bit more and just explain a little bit more about that?
Yes, sir. So our virtual school's been up for a number of years. We currently, prior to this, it was a choice program with a hundred and four students in it. And based on concerns from parents and feedback, we have about seven-hundred students, parents at this time, or students that have expressed interest in transitioning to the virtual school. In the virtual environment, they would come for an orientation, they would get their devices as well, and then they would work completely from home all week. So they will be virtual all week. They, however, will be able to communicate and talk with their teachers. They have teachers assigned to them if they need some support or they're not understanding something, or the parent needs some additional support. They have teachers assigned to them that will work with them face-to-face. They can schedule additional time for tutoring. But it needs to be a student that is able to work somewhat independently, because they would not be coming into the school at all. But their instruction will be consistent for five days. So they would continue to work through the five-day period. For example, this past spring, we had a lot of students that were taking college and career promise courses at the high school level, and because they were already online through the community college, they didn't miss a beat with instruction. And so that's how our virtual students operated as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Devin?
Yes. Dr. Baughnite, clarify one thing for me. On virtual days, will teachers be doing live instruction that will allow for the students to interact with the teachers?
So are you referring to the students that are coming to school as cohort A, and they would come to school on Monday, Tuesday? Are you asking on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, will teachers be expected to reach out to those students that are at home?
Exactly.
So one of the things that we're working through, Mr. Devin, and we've played around with that some at the elementary level, depending on the number of students that choose to remain at home, that may allow us to pair teachers differently. If you'll remember, years ago, we used to have two elementary teachers paired together, and this teacher would specialize like a middle school teacher, and they would teach all the math. And this other teacher would teach all the reading. So if we are able to divide the students up appropriately, then we would like to have one teacher that would work with the students on the days that they're working from home. Our goal is to have someone touching the kids every day. But if our numbers are too large, we cannot commit to our regular classroom teacher providing instruction for one group Monday, Tuesday, preparing on Wednesday for Thursday, Friday, and then also touching base with the kids from Monday, Tuesday at the end of the week. That is a goal for us, to have someone touching base with the kids every day. But it really comes down to, we get down to scheduling the schools to make sure that we pair the teachers so they work together, and we don't have teacher burnout, because they're trying to do too many things at one time.
Well, I know this is going to be different than this past spring.
Absolutely.
The plan. I just want to make sure that that child that's on a Monday, Tuesday, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, he's going to get something live from his teacher, he's going to get some interaction with his teacher. So it will be a resemblance of real remote learning versus just looking stuff up or doing something else.
Well, and Mr. Devin, you make a good point. And you know, the state recommended that districts consider purchasing a learning management system, and they suggested Canvas particularly for secondary. And a part of that, that was an issue across the state, because it was new for all of us, and we were thrown into it. And so a part of School of G and Canvas is that teachers will be able to push things out to students and get feedback, and students will be able to upload and be able to get immediate feedback versus they won't have to wait. If they're in cohort A, and they were in school on Monday, Tuesday, they don't have to wait on feedback from their teacher till the following Monday. And that was some of the frustration from students and parents, that we weren't able to give the feedback in a timely manner to students or help them go on to the next activity if they had completed things earlier.
Because we don't want to lose these kids. I mean, I know two days of instruction in school and then three days at home. You know, those three days, sometimes they can go bye-bye.
You're right. And we all recognize that this is not ideal, any of these situations, because nothing replaces a face-to-face classroom with teacher and peer interaction. But based on the circumstance, the two days face-to-face, then we work to interact with the students on the other three days. And our goal is to pair teachers together so that they have strong networks with their students, and everyone's getting what they need every day of the week.
And may I please say that Canvas is a wonderful learning management program. We used it at the elementary level, and it was wonderful and user-friendly when given the time to explore and learn how to use it properly.
Yes, ma'am. We've been given a lot of great feedback. And we have been able to work with School of G in summer school, so that's been very helpful. So for our teachers that worked in summer school, that's been a good, helpful way for us to tweak things to make it work for Gaston County. The other piece of this chart that I would like to highlight, we got a lot of feedback in the spring about CTE and electives. CTE will be face-to-face on the days that students come to school. They will be included in face-to-face with Canvas. We are still waiting to get additional feedback from the state as to how credentials and certifications will work based on time and hours. So that's something that we're still working through that is beyond our control as a district. But we will notify and make sure that parents are aware as soon as we know early on in the school year. And then child nutrition, Dr. Hushard has talked. Child nutrition, Dr. Hushard has already talked about. We'll do grab-and-go on the days. We'll make that available on the days that students are not in school. So if they're in cohort A, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they could participate in grab-and-go. And then when they're in school, of course, they will get breakfast and lunch at school. And then here is an example of potentially a staggered start entry and dismissal time to get all the students in school with the limited bus routes that we would be required. So potentially, elementary students would be seven-thirty to two-thirty. Middle school students would be eight-thirty to three-thirty. And then high school students would be eight-thirty to three-thirty as well, which would allow all the students to get to their locations and utilizing our same buses.
Now, Dr. Baughnite, where is that time in between for students to sanitize their hands and to do all of that? Because I'm looking at your schedule, and I see rigor there, but do you have like a break in between?
Are you talking about the sample schedule during the school day?
Yes, yes.
So, for example, in the elementary school, the students are going to remain in their desk, and they will have very limited movement during the day, other than recess. We, of course, will stop by the bathroom and wash hands and all those things. We'll have hand sanitizers, Dr. Hushard talked about in the classroom. Students will be assigned a desk. There will be no flex groups where I change desk or I move to this group during the day. That will be limited. The teacher's area even will be limited, where her movement can be in the classroom just to make sure that we're trying to social distance, which has been one of the conversations across the state about the challenges that teachers will just face, even on the days when they do the face-to-face instruction.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Baughnite?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you say recess, do you mean that the children are able to go outside and play the normal things they do in elementary?
Yes, sir. That's the plan. So we will work with our elementary schools to schedule. For example, if I have my classroom, I may go out, and it may be that there are three classes on the playground versus eight that would typically be, and they're all walking the track, they're all playing together. We would have to play on certain equipment as a cohort. So we couldn't enter mixed classes. So we're preparing for that as well, because we think it's so critical that they still have that.
One other thing. Will they still be able to do labs like in automotive and welding and such as that?
As we look at our schedule, that's one of the things that we're working on with Mr. Buchanan. The face-to-face time and CTE will be dedicated to those lab times, because that's going to be so critical. And we're going to do our best in working with the state that our students can still get their credentials and certifications, if possible, depending on the amount of hours they are required to get, to be given those credentials and certifications. Internships potentially will not occur, and that's based on community relationships and then also social distancing and limiting the number of people in their building. So we're planning, though, to do our labs and the hands-on things, not just in CTE, but also in our science classrooms as well, when the kids come to school face-to-face.
I know Gaston Collins continued to do welding labs, B L E T, as well as fire training. I didn't know if we were different or not.
We are planning to do the labs on the face-to-face days. We just have to work with the CTE requirements at the state level as far as awarding credentials and certifications. I know that was an issue last spring, and we're working through that with the state.
Please, please correct me if I hurt you. Um, did you say playground equipment? Did you mention playground equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that going to be cleaned? Who's responsible for cleaning the playground equipment once the children return to their classroom?
Well, we may be doing more things. Several years ago, when the state guidance came out about the Healthy Youth Act and playground equipment, each of our elementary classrooms, for example, they're given a set of playground equipment that they can take out from their classroom. Years ago, we had a prescribed curriculum that they were supposed to do certain things on certain days to make sure that they were getting some structured physical education. We may have to go back to that and hold people to that, because they will have to stay in their cohort group. So there may not be a bunch of children on the swings or whatever the other equipment is on the playground. It may be more of, we're playing kickball in this area. We're doing hula hoops in this area, and it's our equipment from our classroom, and we go in from recess, and that can be cleaned for the next day.
Got you.
Dr. Baughnite, one quick question. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the special academic services?
So, yes, sir. And that's at the bottom of that slide that we're.
That's why I'm reading below it.
Yes. And so on that, you will see that we're talking about, for example, we have children that have individualized education plans, students that have 504 plans. We have academically-intellectually gifted students and English language learners that will need to spend time with those specific teachers that have those skills that are required to be met or supported on their plans. And so when the children are in school for their face-to-face instruction, that will be when they'll get a lot of that support. But also, when they're at home, those teachers will need to also continue to reach out to them to make sure that we're getting our prescribed time in and meeting the needs of their plan.
Okay. Thank you.
So those services will still be in place. So those services will still be in place. They cannot go away. They will not be taken away from students. It may look different on the days that they're at home, but they'll receive those services.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So again, Gaston Virtual Academy, you'll see 100% online, student-paced. It is fully flexible. Students can work wherever, whenever, or wherever. Instructors offer feedback and support to personalize learning for student pace. Courses offered fully online with support from highly qualified teachers, and the curriculum is aligned to the standard courses studied for the state. That is the same whether you're face-to-face or you're virtual. The difference on the Virtual Academy in comparison, 50% in-class time and 50% remote. So half the week or two days of the week, I'm face-to-face with the teacher, getting direct instruction, and then the other three days of that week, I'm working independently and getting some feedback from teachers and interaction with teachers. Students will complete their work online for all scheduled classes on remote learning days. That's where they'll use a learning management system and upload their assignments. Both online and offline learning opportunities are available. For those students that don't have access to the internet, we have worked with technology support services to come with an alternative option to make sure those students have access to the content. Student cohorts rotate schedules between in-class instruction and at-home learning. And then, of course, again, our curriculum is always going to be aligned to the standard courses study, no matter what option parents choose. So again, and this is, and we've talked about it quite a bit, but this is the question that I've received the most, trying to understand what's the difference, as parents are trying to make this decision. So there will be two cohort groups of students. We have talked about potentially dividing them by alphabet, trying to keep families together. And then 50% of their time will be spent socially distanced in a traditional classroom. 50% of their time will be spent continuing their learning through an online platform. Remote learning days will be a continuation of in-class instruction, so there will be no time lost. Gaston Virtual will be 100% of their classes online through the platform. Instructors will be available to assist and support, just like they would in a regular classroom. Interactive class time is available, option to learn at their own pace. And so what that means is that if you want more interaction, when you sign up for that, and we give you the survey and find out what you want in the virtual, then you'll get as much interaction as you would like. Or if you want to be self-paced, and you really want to work with your student from home, and submit assignments, and we'll monitor your progress that way, then it could be completely self-paced if you selected that option as well. So you have a little more flexibility in the virtual option, but even the remote learning, you'll spend remote learning time continuing your coursework from the class days. They'll complete online assignments for each course every day. The beauty of the schedule is that you at least know that there are set days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for example, that I'll be working independently at home. You'll communicate with your teachers to maintain continuity of work. If I'm an older sibling and I have a younger sibling, the goal is to have them on that same schedule, so that if I need to be there with my younger brother or sister, we're home on the same days. And then in the Virtual Academy, you, of course, can be home every day, and that we'll build their schedule to fit their needs. Interactive class time, option to learn at your own pace, and communicate with teachers for support and enrichment. And even in the Virtual Academy, we have electives. We even have a physical education. We have photography and all those other things that make a well-rounded school day. It's not just core content in the Virtual Academy.
Dr. Bocknight, if I may, just for a moment, ask another question?
Sure.
Um, I've had some parents express interest and ask about the Virtual Academy. Um, i-if those families were to choose to enroll in the Virtual Academy, um, perhaps for the beginning of this school year, unless, say, they get through half the year or through the first semester, things improve with the COVID situation, and then they want their child to go back to their physical school. Is that something that would be possible, or are they restricted to being in the Virtual Academy the entire year? Secondarily, um, uh, if, if students have gotten accepted in a school choice program, if those families don't want their children in physical school this year, would they be able to do the Virtual Academy and then return to their school choice program, for example, in the following year?
Mr. Davis, those are two great questions. I'm glad that you brought them up. Um, we have been talking about, if you choose to do the virtual, because we would need to hire and staff the school, we would ask that families remain in the virtual a minimum of a semester. And then if things look different with COVID-19, if that's their reason for moving over, and they want to transition back to their school, we think that we can work with schools to transition them back at the semester, or they could remain for the year. We are working with our families in the choice program. They also should have the support and safety. If they want to be in a different setting for the semester, then they will be able to go back to their seat at their choice program as well.
Dr. Bocknight?
Yes, ma'am.
On that same line, uh, how will the Virtual Academy work as far as extracurricular and activities, uh, such as sports, if they choose to go to virtual and then decide that they would like to go back to a home school?
Uh, the Virtual Academy at this point does not have sports as a part of its lineup. We certainly can talk about that. I know Mr. Duncan's going to give you some just basic athletic information in a little bit. However, we have always allowed students, if they want to participate in a CTE course that's offered at their home school, if they want to do that, they could. My thinking, Ms. Cherry, if a family is choosing to do the virtual because of COVID, then they will want to remain completely remote, or virtual, I'm sorry.
May I ask another question regarding School G?
Yes, ma'am.
Teachers will have the opportunity, if they're given the time, to explore and to, uh, elaborate, uh, on how they plan to use School G in their classroom. Now, I know, based on what I read, uh, you can create an assessment at the beginning of the school year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So this will give our teachers the opportunity to, uh, work together in creating some type of assessment based on what the student had previously achieved before leaving school in March. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. We intend to assess all of our students, particularly in K-8, and then depending on the content area, if it's not a course builder in high school, that may be a little different. But for every course builder, we intend to assess our students. So if you're a rising fifth grader, we're going to give you an assessment at the beginning of the school year, so that we know what we need to do to support you. We also would say that our children are behind, because we are repacing our content so that the last nine weeks of last year is integrated into the fall semester.
Got you.
So that no matter what level of instruction you receive, whether you were a student in Gaston County or not, you will get that reinforcement in the fall with those skills that you feel like you are deficient in.
Thank you.
So again, the remote learning plan in the blended classroom will be aligned to the standard courses study. They will learn through a blend of in-person and online instruction. Teachers will design the courses. So we're not taking away the teachers' art to how they provide instruction for their courses. We're giving a consistent platform, so that is consistent across the district. And that's very important to our teachers, because they're so skilled and wonderful at what they do. And then in our Virtual Academy, they will complete still the same standard courses study, 100% online instruction. So you will not be required, other than orientation, to come into a physical building unless you ask for some additional time after school for tutoring if you need some face-to-face. But we believe that we can do that in the virtual platform as well. Courses are designed and taught by Gaston Virtual Academy teachers. So there will be one group of teachers that will have consistent training and expectations for students. In closing, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to share details for families to better understand the options presented today. And they've been well thought and planned, and we've gotten lots of feedback from all stakeholder groups. And parents have really given me a lot of good feedback about what they enjoyed about spring and what they did not like about spring, and even feedback about our summer activities. All the options mentioned will look very different than last spring in our remote emergency instruction. This is planned instruction. We have great teachers that are working hard over the summer, even on their vacation, to prepare for us coming back in the fall. Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, Dr. Bocknight, I just want to thank you for the, uh, wonderful, uh, information. It's, it was very, very thorough, and I, I think it gave our stakeholders, um, the information they need to make the decisions that they need to make. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I too would like to thank you for a job well done. You thought about the things that are necessary and important to move our children. We know that we have had or experienced a learning loss, but with the time, with the programs, and with the support from superintendent and leadership team, we know that we can make it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bocknight.
Thank you.
And I think we need to hear several things that Dr. Bocknight focused on. One, none of this replaces our teachers and the highly qualified folks. And she talked about all the work that they have continued to do beyond June 15th, the trainings that they have been coming to and will continue. And that's why it's so critical for us as we look forward, knowing getting them back August 10th, it will have been four months since we had any large group of our teachers together at our respective facilities. And so that is going to be critical on this. And I appreciate the board listening to this. This is a lot of information, and there are layers and layers below this. And it's easy to pick things, because it's got to be developed further. And it's going to take those professionals saying, this is what I see can work, and this is how I can grow. And then they'll have options of, can we do it this way? Just as Dr. Bocknight talked about, the pairing. That came out of our NCAE meeting. Uh, the follow-up email that we received from, uh, the leader, uh, Pam Miller, their president, said, could you consider this? Could you consider that? So we were, we're continuing to get feedback and working through to develop this. And so it will be an evolving process. But thank you, Melissa, for all the work that your team has done. Another thing that is critical, and we know that you've had some questions about, is the health and safety procedures. And I'm going to ask Denise McLean to just do a brief review of that. As I've mentioned already, we have a great relationship with our local health department, and I know this morning, there was a conversation about some of the information. So, Ms. McLean?
Yes, good evening, Chairman Moore, Vice Chairman Collier, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Booker. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on some of the health and safety procedures that we must put in place for the start of school due to COVID-19. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has released a toolkit that addresses the recommendations and requirements for schools under re-entry Plan B. This evening, we will, would like to share information about the requirements to conduct screenings and temperature checks. As a frame of reference, I will present two flow charts that outline protocols for staff to follow when responding to a positive symptom screening. These protocols identify next steps in interacting with students who have screened positive. So the first slide shows or indicates the next steps that schools must take after screening for COVID-19. If you look to the far left, you will see the first branch indicates that if no symptoms exist, or if there are no flags, then that student proceeds to school as usual. The second branch indicates that if a student presents as having been exposed but have no symptoms, um, and firstly, let's go back and define what exposure means, and that is being within six feet of someone diagnosed with COVID-19 for 15 minutes or more. That student cannot attend school, and they must be home for 14 days since the time of the exposure. The third branch shows that when there is a diagnosis but no symptoms, in this situation, the student still cannot attend school. They must remain home for 10 days since the first positive COVID-19 test. Now, the fourth branch indicates that, uh, shows that if a student presents with a symptom, and symptoms can include having a fever, chills, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, a new cough, or new loss of taste or smell. Then again, in that situation, if any of these symptoms are present, the student cannot attend school. So let's take a deeper look at the symptoms. Um, a student cannot go to school if confirmed with COVID-19, or the person has been, has not been tested. Again, this is when somebody is showing a symptom. Um, 10 days after they first start showing a symptom, and, um, they show no signs of a fever, and that's without medication, and no other symptoms, then they can return to school. If a negative COVID-19 tests, um, with no fever for 24 hours, again, not having any medic, medication to reduce the fever, and that student remains well for 24 hours, then they can return to school. And finally, if there's a confirmed diagnosis other than COVID-19, for example, a stomach virus or an ear infection, um, they would follow the normal school policies in order for them to return to school. So the next slide shows what happens when a child arrives at school with symptoms. As you notice, there are several different scenarios. And to start, it's important to know that any school staff can, can conduct screenings. Uh, we do have school nurses, but some of them serve more than one school, so we will allow other staff members to assist in this process. So looking at the second blue box, once a child is screened, and they show exposure, they have symptoms, or they have a confirmed diagnosis, then they will be evaluated again by the nurse or school staff member, just to confirm that exposure, the diagnosis, or that they are actually showing symptoms. Um, if no symptoms or no flags exist, then that student can go to class. If confirmed, the student is sent home or held until a parent is able to come to school and pick them up. In this situation, the schools must establish an isolation room, and there, the parent, the student will wait until the parent comes to pick them up. Now, back to the red box, if a student that was previously tested then shows, uh, starts to show symptoms, then they would be retested, as in the other case, be confirmed. And if they are confirmed, that student would have to go home. They would remain at school in an isolation room until the parent is able to pick them up. Now, as an additional step, we did consult our local Department of Health and Human Services, and they agree that these are the proper steps that schools should take in conducting screenings for COVID-19. This concludes my presentation on conducting symptom screenings and temperature checks.
Ms. Guthrie, you're on mute.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So let me look at the bus rider first. We are saying that, uh, so only students sitting in the center of a bus could ride to school. What if one student on that bus showed symptoms? Are we saying that we could have a whole bus, a load of students, uh, not come into school? Or what if one child in that classroom had, uh, showed symptoms? Are we saying that the entire classroom would be missing for 15 days? Or what if we say that we do not have a nurse for every school, which I think is critical? Then we say that anyone can conduct screening. Who in the school would be that anyone?
Yes, ma'am. So to start, you mentioned buses, and I know Dr. Hushar did address this. Um, our students would have to go through a process of completing an attestation form. Um, I, at this point, the determination and how we would handle a bus monitor has not been established. We're working through that. However, the state has given us guidelines on having parents complete an attestation form that would indicate that the student, uh, is not symptomatic, that they don't have a fever. That student can then be allowed to ride the school bus. Once students arrive at school, they will also go through the screening process again. So maybe they developed something, you know, from the time they left home, um, and maybe the symptoms didn't show at that time, but they would have a screening before arriving to school. Now, in the event of someone having an outbreak, and your question about the classroom, same situation, I think we, that's one Dr. Hushar alluded to, that we are developing that process to, um, check with our board attorney, and just how we can manage that process of not having students attend a particular classroom if there's someone who exhibits symptoms. We know for sure that we would wait the 24 hours as required, and then do the deep cleaning for that classroom. And then depending on how the scenario presents, then we'll determine those next steps for how we handle other students in that classroom.
And the last one, who in the school would be responsible for, uh, screening?
Yes, ma'am.
If a nurse, if the school did not have, uh, the nurse?
That's correct. So if the nurse is not present, then other staff members can be assigned and would be assigned to take on that responsibility.
We don't have answers yet, though, right? We don't have answers yet, though, right?
Well, that would, I think, in looking at each individual school, they can, the principal would assign who in the building would be responsible for conducting those checks. I also imagine that we would have multiple people in the building. Every person doesn't come through the same door, so multiple people in a school would be responsible for screening our students.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, I've got one.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to get a little clarification, if we have a student that exhibits signs of COVID, and so they're not able to come to school, they can still attend virtually on their cohort day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then would they also be encouraged to attend virtually on the cohort day that they're not assigned to?
I would, I would say not virtually, but they would continue their instruction. They would not have to come into the school building, but certainly, they could continue on with their studies at home virtually. And in the days that they're not, that they would appear face-to-face, they could continue on with their virtual studies during their 10-day period.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes. And it's just like the child making up schoolwork, they would just continue on with their studies if they were at home.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Thank you.
And next, under our focus areas, we had about athletics and extracurricular activities. And so I would ask Mr. Chad Duncan if he could join us, the district athletic director, to talk about just some of what we have been experiencing this summer as we roll into our fall. Chad?
Good evening, Chairman Moore, Vice Chairman Collier, Dr. Booker, and members of the board. We hope that our workouts can begin on August 10th. Obviously, our workouts are going to have to adhere to our social distancing guidelines, and that has been a challenge across the state to try to figure that out as we try to maintain the six feet for all of our activities. The workouts, this would be limited to skill development and conditioning, and they can be held both outdoors and indoors, but they do have number restrictions on that, and they're restricted to no, no contact, period. The skill development is going to depend by sport. So that is something that a lot of people might not be familiar with. So like football, for example, and again, we're in Phase 1 for the High School Athletic Association, and football is not permitted to wear any equipment at all. They can only do conditioning and individual drills. The player must not participate in drills with a single ball that will be handed off or passed to other teammates. And contact with other players is not allowed. And if they did use any type of tackling dummy, or donut, or a sled, it has to be disinfected after each and every use that would occur. And again, I said, number-wise, that is something that we'd have to pay attention to as well. If the workout is going to happen outside, they're only allowed a number of 25, and that would include also, a coach would have to be included in that, the athletic trainer would have to be included in that, any managers or first responder. So again, they would have to make sure they maintain those numbers. And then when they're in those numbers of, let's say there's 22 total student athletes, they'd have to be then put into pods, and the pods have to range in numbers from five to 10. So that is important to also maintain. And then those pods are obviously going to be the same every time that they would have a specific workout. Indoors, they would be allowed a total of 10. So again, if you put the coach and the athletic trainer in there, that would also be, so you'd only have eight possible student athletes inside. And again, every time any of our coaches or student athletes would show up, they'd have to have temperature checks. They can't be 100.4 or above. All of our coaches the whole time, and athletic trainers, would have to wear face coverings. And student athletes, when they checked in every day, would have to wear a face covering.
Straight up there in the woods, there's no gap.
Okay, I'm sorry. But again, those face coverings would have to be worn when they first arrived for the student athlete, and then when they were doing some type of workout, they would then be able to take it off. But as soon as their workout was finished, they would have to put the face covering right back on. I believe that's all I have, unless we have any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Ms. Guthrie?
I have one.
Go ahead, Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Duncan, sports like wrestling wouldn't be offered then, right now, right?
That is correct. In Phase 1, the mat rooms would be closed. All they would be able to do is basically condition, which would be run.
I see. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
And so our last area is about information and communication. And this is an area that we have talked about, and you've heard it throughout the presentation. What I would like to share is, we are in process of developing the reopening schools booklet. It is right now at 30-some pages and growing. And this will be a document that will have available virtually for families to be able to access, and give them one plan, one place to go for a lot of the operational information. But always, the key communication comes from our schools to their respective students and families in that. So that gets us through a lot of the information on communication, and then all the other areas that we have covered today. And so now, it's for the reopening plan, and what we are recommending that you do. John F. Kennedy said a long time ago, leadership and learning are indispensable to each other. We know that learning is critical in our community. So to recap, Plan A would allow being a minimal social distancing. Plan B would be in moderate social distancing. And then Plan C would be remote. As we move forward and make a recommendation, know that we recognize we are still in Phase 2 of a directive from the governor for our entire state. And there are still decisions to be made at that level that will impact everything that we continue to do. But we know that it is time to put something forward so our families can begin planning and trying to adjust their schedules. And so this next graphic shows what we recommend to the Board of Education, that we go with a group, student Group A and Student Group B, and each of those groups would attend school two days a week. And this diagram shows that Group A would be on Monday and Tuesday, Group B would be on Thursday and Friday. And of course, the Virtual Academy is operational all five days with its operation. And so that is what we present. But recognizing that we still have dates, August 10th is when our teachers and certified staff return with a targeted today based on legislation, August 17th start date. There is a lot of work and coordination to get completed in all of this. And we know that there will be additional data points that will come between now and the 10th, as well as the 17th, and we will have to be fluid and working with that. And it will take our teaching professionals to work with their administrators on how we can develop these plans to allow students to come back on two days a week, and to establish the way that we can do our remote learning. What we know, and what I want to stress to the community, this is not what was done in the spring. In the spring, there were a lot of things edicted by the state, North Carolina State Board of Education. This is back to traditional school from grades and attendance, and all that school is supposed to be, and we'll have to be working from that. So we need to be incorporating that in all the plans. So we want to have a safe environment, and we remain concerned about how we'll bring our employees back, how we'll maintain a safe environment for our employees. We have heard those comments, and we'll continue to work with them with always wanting it to be a safe environment. So we know that we want all students to have an opportunity to learn. You've heard Dr. Balknight touch on the various ways we're trying to meet those that we know have challenges in access from the internet. We have been working with the state on some group purchasing. We have done some things to make our school parking lots accessible for folks to come in and be able to log in there with our devices on our Wi-Fi. So we are trying to make it as much available as possible to meet that gap that we know is in our community. With all that said, Mr. Chair, we would again just be willing to entertain any questions and clarifications, but we do recommend that to you as a board. Mr. Devin? You're on mute. You're on mute. You're on mute, Mr. Devin.
How am I doing now?
You're good.
Okay. Dr. Booker, with our water fountains closed, I had somebody ask me this question. You know, we will encourage children to bring their own water bottles and thermoses to school. I'm sure they will do, because we can't use our water fountains.
Well, there are a lot of guidance out there about that that still have to be worked through. It was, it was a lot of time in this conversation today was about our buses, and that the attestation document still has debate on how frequently it has to be filled out, who has to deliver it. So those are things that the state is still giving us guidance on. So yes, sir, there are a number of items like that.
My second thing would be, and I know the answer to this, I just want to say it out. We're going to use the thermostats that are handheld thermostats, right? Is that correct?
At this time, the state will be providing us one handheld thermometer that we can, per 100 students, and we'll be securing more. And so that would be the first. We are looking at other methods, because when you think about occupying our high schools, the time that will take. And Mr. Devin, another thing that you and I spoke about earlier today that I failed to mention is, we know that one of the critical things that we still have to deal with with our employees is they have students, and how we meet the needs of our employees with their students. And so we'll, that is another thing that we have to evolve on how we can help support them when they're teaching, and it's not the days for their students to be in the classroom.
Right. That's, that's a real important factor right there, because, you know, a lot of teachers take their children to school with them.
Yes, sir.
One final question before we vote and go on what we're supposed to do. Are we going to expect any money from our county commissioners, or any more money from the state? Because this is very, very expensive. I mean, I kept hearing, we're buying this, we're buying this, we're getting PVE. You know, how much money is this going to cost us? And are we going to plan to ask the commissioners for any help?
We have tried to keep Dr. Eagle informed of our plans as we are evolving. And yes, sir, we did get the First Care's money, allowed us to appropriate money to do the basic PPE purchases. And then the governor has given, as we talked about earlier, the five face mask and those, but ongoing, and you just hear, as some of the questions you all have asked, you dive in, it is going to take more custodial employees. It is going to take more potential faculty or support people in our buildings to deal with this. And so that cost is hard to estimate now. What we have tried to do is develop plans based on meeting the academic requirements and being safe, and then we'll determine who all we need to go ask for additional funds. But fortunately, at this point, we've had great support in offering us money from the state and as well as locally.
One final comment, whatever we decide today, and I think we're at the point where we're ready to decide, we need to let our parents know that four months down the road or three months, if things get better, this is not in stone for the rest of the year. That, you know, we possibly could go back to school full-time, or it might go the other way. We hope it doesn't. But we need the parents to know that we will continue to look at all the options we have to get a better education for their students, and to do what's right for their parents also. That was just a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Devin. Mr. Hall, did you have something? Mr. Collier does.
Dr. Booker, I'm on the cleaning part, and I think you're correct, that it's going to probably have additional staff for protocol cleaning, restrooms, classrooms, and everything, and take that off the teachers, because I know there's going to be a learning curve for all our staff and teachers for the new virtual and the whole new part of going back to school. So I just want to thank the staff and your leadership for this. I know it's still evolving as we speak, but this is the first thing we can get out to the public, and where they can start making plans, we have multiple plans. So thank Dr. Booker and his staff for all the information they provided us today.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that, to follow up with Lee, we've got to be ready to transition quickly, one way or another, based on directive or if there's an event. So I know that we need to have plans, and we're probably still trying to put together plans. And so one question I have is, so say we get a hotspot or an outbreak at one school, do we have, do we have a backup plan for that, or will we try to do something, how the community looks, or based on one school? I know that we can sit here and do the what-ifs all night long, but that's just one, if we have an outbreak at one school, what happens?
And Mr. Collier, that is, and Mr. Clinton kind of alluded to it, each one of these events has a different interpretation because of all the variables with it. That's why we would immediately get the health department.
I can't hear you.
My mic's on.
The sound went away.
Can everyone else hear me?
That's better.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Collier, as Mr. Clinton said in his remarks, each of these instances that we've had to date has its own unique phases to it. And so we would immediately get involved with the health department. And we have done some discussions about just potential scenarios, but they're quick to say, we'd have to look and say, kids, how long they've been, how many, and the happening. So we can't give you an answer that this is what we would do, but I can tell you that there have already been instances in the public schools in North Carolina where they've had to adapt, and there are some roadmaps there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, did you have a question earlier?
Yes, I have one that got knocked off of the Good Lord storms. You know, I got a satellite for my internet, huge net. But anyway, you know, I don't know if you have addressed it, but I'm concerned with the ventilation systems. Have you addressed the filtration system, like with HEPA filters and all? Or Mr. Hushar would probably know that better than anyone, because that is, you know, it's the air they're breathing.
Mr. Hall, that is a concern that has been raised by a number of folks as we have been working through this. And yes, sir, depending on the type of ventilation system you have at that, and as you know, from, from your professional experience, we're held to a higher standard on air mixture that we have to do, is number of amount of CFM that is required. And so we've got to evaluate and look at that. And the critical part-
On air.
Yes, sir. And the critical part on that is finding for these rooms where we have to put students who may be exhibiting symptoms, and making sure that has a separate. So that is one of the things that has to be worked through.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
I just want to say that, you know, the plans that we have, for what we know now, I feel good about. As Dr. Booker said, we don't know what next week is going to bring, or by August 17th. I have total faith in our staff, all of our teachers, all the administrators in our schools, and with everybody's hard work and their commitment, we're going to make it work. But everybody needs to keep in mind that it could change come August 17. But we need to go ahead and get a plan in place and move on, and- But we need to go ahead and get a plan in place, and move on, and just continue on until we see what it's going to be. So again, I commend everybody for, for the hard work that they've done up to this point, and, and let's move on until we have to, to make another turn in the, turn in the road, if that's the way it has to be.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things I want to say. First of which, I want to thank the public and all of our stakeholders that are out there. I know there's a lot of folks that are watching this meeting today. We've gotten a lot of emails as a board. Dr. Booker and his folks have gotten a lot of emails. We've had a lot of, a lot of input from parents and families, and we really sincerely appreciate that. We are in uncharted waters here, never had to deal with anything like this, and I will say, having watched the work that Dr. Booker and his staff have done, they have worked incredibly hard and thoughtfully to try to put together a plan and to do what is best for as many or all of our students as they possibly can. We're in tough situation here, that we cannot make everybody happy, and not everybody can get everything they want. The reality is, none of us want to be here, but we are. I've gotten a number of emails from folks out there that have, that have said clearly they're all praying for us, and that is so appreciated, and it's great to see a community coming together with that kind of support, because that's what we need to make this work. It sounds like there are some holes that need to be filled between now and August the 17th. Dr. Booker, are we confident that we can get the holes filled in Plan B between now and then?
What I know, Mr. Davis, is I have said since I became superintendent seven years ago, that there is one thing I know about Gaston County schools, is that whatever bar is put in front of them, they get above it, and they exceed it. And that's where I have confidence in the leadership of our schools, and why you heard repeated in here, we are blessed with a great faculty, and a large percentage of our faculty are Gaston County grown, and this is their home, and this is the pride of their lives. And so we will do everything, but we will also have to be wise enough and smart enough that when we see something doesn't work, to say it doesn't work. And I think that's why Ms. Cherry has highlighted that, Ms. Guthrie's questions, as we were going through all that detail about transportation and how the buildings operate, there is a lot to do, and we have to be willing to say if something doesn't work, and to listen to people and to the options that there are. And that's what I respect about the dialogue with this board, and all the conversations we've had over the last 10 days, as we've been trying to work since the governor gave us this direction. So I believe we will do the best we can, but we will have to keep an open mind about what is best for the entire community.
Well, I think you're spot on, and I think you have the support of the board, no matter what we decide. What I would ask, and what I hope is that, is that we will have the support from our families and from our communities to work with us as constructively as possible, to try to make the best of a tough situation. We saw that in the spring, we have seen it through the communications that we've all received, and I have confidence that we'll see that as we move forward, and I think we will, as a community here, be able to overcome the challenges that are in front of us. So I just want to say that, I appreciate everybody's hard work, and I look forward to seeing us overcome the obstacles that are in front of us.
Mr. Collier?
I was just going to say that I, I thank staff for the work they've done. I think our county recognizes that we have a lot of children in this county that online only disenfranchises them, because they do not, will not have the opportunity to participate in education, and there's, let's just be frank, there's some situations at home that don't support education, that will not even let some students, support them to even participate in online. We know that from before, we know that from all over the state, and you know, the data's out there, it's just a hard fact. So to have the school open, especially for some of those children, and to provide meals and an environment of learning that they're not going to get any other way, is something that I think we, our staff has thought long and hard about, and what's really pushing all of us to, to this decision that we're looking at this direction. But to echo Ms. Guthrie earlier, I think she was asking good questions, and we all have a lot of concerns, and Mr. Booker, thank you for your response, because these are uncharted territories, as Mr. Davis says, and we are going to have to make some changes, and we are going to evaluate probably every day how this starts. And, and I forgot who said it, we're also, you know, something could change between now and the day we start school. So I just ask that everybody out there be patient with us, parents and teachers and children, students, all just taking an extra dose of patience as we try to work together in this education process this year.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Ms. Guthrie, your, your mute is on.
I have heard my colleagues say uncharted territory, and I actually said, we are treading in unfamiliar territory. And I am going to speak from the experience as an educator, one who has actually been a supervisor, been in the classroom, and realized the importance of having support. I asked questions today because I felt that they were pertinent to the beginning of school. Personally, I know how important it is for children to have those social skills. I more than anyone else realize the importance of learning loss. I do not want to see that happen, but I do want to see, and I applaud Dr. Booker and his leadership team, you know how much I support education, and you know how much I believe in our faculties and staff across Gaston County. Please do not put any more on our classroom teachers. They are going to have enough trying to master their schoology and canvas, trying to make certain that they are going to move our children from the learning loss that they perhaps experienced from March until they start school again. If we know and say, unless a child has a problem health-wise, we must encourage as well as support the wearing of mask. We cannot say that little Johnny can wear the mask indoors whilst he's in the classroom. Oh, just, let's relax. It shouldn't be that way. We need to support our classroom teachers. They are going to have enough to deal with. Our school administrators, they are going to have enough to deal with. What if a classroom teacher becomes ill? Will there be a substitute teacher there? What will be the guidelines for actually having a sub come into that room? I heard what was said about the health measures and the precautions that were going to be taken. Please don't lose the interest, the excitement, and the enthusiasm as far as supporting our schools, our administrators, and our teachers, once we start school and perhaps everything looks okay. That's all that I'm asking for. Personally, I believe our teachers need that time, the extra time to learn, the learning platforms, because who knows? We don't know, as everyone has stated, whether or not we will, or our children will start school on August 17th. But we need to give our educate abruptly, we left school. So let's give them the time that they need, so that they can feel comfortable, because they too have families, and we all want what's best for Gaston County schools. We love our superintendent and our leadership team, and we thank you, but we need to make sure that support is there from day one until we leave in June of the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Ushry, did you have anything? Your mute's on.
My mute's off.
You're good.
Let's move.
All right.
Let's move.
All right. I just want to say one thing, you know, I think somebody said it earlier, this is not really, it's a lose-lose for us, no matter which way we go. Dr. Booker and his team have worked extremely hard. I talked to Dr. Booker more last week than I talked to my wife, I believe, so we, I think this is a good option. I think that, from the, hearing the comments, I believe the board supports it. I'll be calling for a vote. Mr. Devene, did you have something else?
I want to remind the people that there's a thousand questions that we could ask. Should a custodian wear a face mask? How about the supplies we bring? I want our parents to know that we're going to answer all those questions before, before we start. I mean, we can't answer them all tonight about substitutes and about face masks, but we will answer each of those questions, and so they'll know the answer to those before they go. And I wouldn't mind having parents submitting questions, at least to their principals or their schools, so we can make sure that we haven't forgotten anything. I know, Dr. Booker, your staff, and you have done a great job, and you've hit everything on the nose, but every once in a while, we might forget something. But that's all I wanted to say. Parents, give us a chance, tell us what you need to know, and I promise you that we will go through each and every one of your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Devene. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. It's an action item update on reopening schools. I need a motion. Mr. Ushry?
I make the motion to accept the proposal.
I need a second. Mr. Collier? Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? You're, you're, you're on mute. Okay. Ms. Cherry? Okay. Mr. Ramsey?
Uh.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Collier, I saw you seconded. Mr. Devene?
Yes.
Okay. And it's unanimous.
It is not.
It's not unanimous, I'm sorry.